Are you okay to go? Excellent. Good evening and welcome. My name is Adam Block. I'm the Chair of the Needham Planning Board. And finding a quorum of members present, I call this meeting to order. One administrative note is that I believe our colleague Artie Crocker is not in attendance this evening either remotely or any other means. And so we'll be able to dispense with our motions by voice vote as opposed to a roll call. So this meeting of the planning board is being conducted in a hybrid manner consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. All material for this meeting are available on the town's website, which is needhamma.gov. First, I'd like to welcome our newly elected planning board member, Justin McCollum. Justin, on behalf of the board, welcome.
Welcome.
And with that, I'll introduce our town planner, Lee Newman, and our town assistant planner, Alex Clea. The first item on our agenda is a public hearing for an amendment to major project site plan special permit number 2001-02 with the, I may mispronounce this, Phoenitimus Associates Limited Partnership Care of the Patrini Corporation as petitioner to convert approximately 815 square feet from general office use to medical office use for the property located at 464 Hillside Avenue. While we invite Evans and his team up to the table for the petitioner, may I have a motion to waive the reading of the notice of hearing?
So moves.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha. Any discussion in the hearing now? It'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously by those present. While Evans gets set up, for the record, I'll read into the minutes, read into the record the correspondence that we've received from town departments and others. A letter dated March 14 from the petitioner's attorney, Evans Huber, email dated April 16 from Justin Savignano at the town engineer's office with no comments, by email dated April 22 from Police Schittler with no issues, by email dated April 16 from Fire Chief Tom Conroy with no issues, by email dated March 28 from the Assistant Health Director Tara Gird reminding petitioners, reminding the petitioner about the health department demolition review reports and pest control maintenance throughout any demolition and renovation. And by email dated March 28 from the building commissioner, Joe Prondak citing no concerns, by email dated March 28 from the director of Town Parks and Forests, Ed Olson citing no concerns. And with that, Evans, I'm happy to turn it over to you if you'd like to introduce your team.
Okay, thank you. This is Bob Michaud, you probably know him.
He's our traffic consultant. And this is Kurt Patrini on behalf of the owner.
Right. And Mr. McCollum, my name is Evans Huber.
My pleasure.
So this is a very simple request. We're asking that the special permit be amended because, as you know, this building is a mix of medical offices and general offices, and the parking requirements for those two types of uses are different. Medical office is one space per 200 square feet, general is one space per 300 square feet. So if you are converting a portion of what is currently permitted as general office to medical office, that will increase the parking requirement under the bylaw. So we have an anticipated tenant QC Kinetics, which will be running a medical office in this space, and they're proposing to occupy space that is partially already permitted as medical office, and a portion of it that they'll be taking over, about 815 square feet, is currently permitted as general office. So converting that 815 square feet from medical, from general to medical increases the calculated parking demand under the bylaw by one space. We currently, there's 166 spaces at the site. We currently have a waiver of 15 spaces because according to the bylaw, the current parking demand is 181. And so now we are requesting that this proposed change increases that calculated parking demand under the bylaw formula by one space. So that is the amendment to the special permit that we are requesting to increase the current waiver from 15 spaces to 16 spaces. Mr. Michaud will explain to you the reason why we think that is a reasonable ask.
Very good. Are you logged in and able to share your screen?
I am, sir.
Excellent.
There we go.
Great.
Okay, so for the record, Robert Michaud, Principal of MDM Transportation Consultants. We're based in Marlboro, Massachusetts. We've conducted a parking evaluation in support of this request. And as the board is aware, the facility is located on a parcel joining Hillside Avenue number 464. Site plan is shown on the screen here entails principal driveway on Hillside Avenue as well as an adjoining driveway that serves a surface lot portion of the site. The structure does include garage spaces, which in total provide 166 spaces when combined with the surface spaces. Within the garage itself, these are layout plans that indicate the general parking layout. In this particular lower level floor plan, these are spaces that are directly accessible in the structure from Hillside Avenue. And then in the, what's called the first floor plan, these are spaces that are accessible from the surface lot portion of the subject property. The current occupancy of the building, which in net or in aggregate provides 46,817 square feet, has several vacancies within it totaling about 22,000 square feet. And the portion of the currently vacant building that we're focused on relates to suite numbers 300-1 and 302, which would be occupied by KC Kinetics. The larger suite 302, 1,829 square feet, is actually already zoned for medical office use. The balance of the requested space, 815 square feet, represents currently office use that would be converted to the medical office use. The process that we've used to evaluate parking demand characteristics of the entire site began with inventorying the existing parking utilization for current occupancy. These are, the building is currently vacant, some 22,000 square feet. The balance of roughly 24,000 square feet represents a peak demand rate of 71 parked vehicles. This allows us to then prorate what the building would be generating for parking demand if it were fully occupied. So we've done a calculation, which is based on what we call an empirical basis. And this would indicate, in yellow, the existing tenants, which generate a peak parking demand of 71 spaces. And you'll see there's two methods of calculating the balance of additional demands that would be created above that existing. First, the re-tenancy of vacant office use, that's roughly 20,000, just over 20,000 square feet, which you've prorated to the same parking demand ratio as we've observed, would result in 59 additional parked vehicles. And then the medical office component, which is currently zoned that way, 1,829 square feet, if it were occupied, based on a prescribed empirical parking demand rate of 3.88, would generate an additional parking demand of eight. In total, if we apply these empirical standards, we estimate that there would be 138 parked vehicles in this facility.
And for, and for the record, there's 166 parking spaces.
That is correct. Right? So based on empirical evidence and information, we know that the parking supply well supports the full occupancy of the building. Now, we've done a second method, which is based on what we would call an industry standard basis. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, ITE, publishes parking demand rates by land use type office and medical office. Those rates are a bit higher than what we've actually observed at this site and other sites within Needham that have medical office components. So we've applied that higher standard, and what it would indicate is consistency with empirical but slightly higher. So using the same method of calculation, re-tenancy of the vacant space, we would estimate 140 parked vehicles. And method B, where we swap out the 815 square feet from office to medical office, we would generate one additional parked vehicle. So the peak demand using this method, the more conservative approach, is 141 out of the 166. So the conclusion here is that whether we use empirical or industry standard methods, that we have a surplus of at least 25 parking spaces on the site, and it's well supported. So consistent with zoning, we expect one additional space demand, but more than adequate surplus to support the request. Thank you.
Do my colleagues have any comments or questions?
No.
Paul, Justin, Natasha. Lee, do you have any comments or questions? Is there anyone in the room here tonight that wishes to speak to this application? Is there anyone on Zoom? Can we, can you stop sharing, please?
Oh, yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. That's helpful. Is there anyone online that wishes to speak to this application? Is that activists? Is that related to you guys at all?
No.
What's that?
The next class.
Oh, very good. Okay. And I don't see any hands up. So do you have any other comments?
No.
I'll say, I've gone through the material. There's an oversupply here of, you know, of parking. I don't see an issue with the waiver of one additional space. And so can I have a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close the hearing?
We have, we have a motion by Justin. We have a second by, by Paul to close the hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We've unanimously voted to close the hearing. Lee, when will we issue the decision?
At the next town meeting, May 14.
Which is May 14, you said? All right.
After town meeting.
So after town meeting. So that would be our next meeting, in which we would...
Send me the presentation.
I will.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Great, thank you.
Good.
I will not be here.
Okay.
You'll have a draft of it.
Yes. And my other client will be winging it on their own.
Well, we...
You need to worry. My wife and I will be in Europe, so.
Good for you. Enjoy.
Have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Stay attention.
So in a, we have 15 minutes before, a little less, before our next hearing commences at 7:30. So I would move on to the third item on our agenda with regard to the, actually, let's do, let's skip the next item, the article assignments, and see if we can dispense with that. I've prepared the deck for the solar. I'm comfortable with the, with the solar, and I've already, you know, prepared much of the materials for the affordable housing district. Do you want to present either one of them? Are you guys fine if I do it?
Yes. Because I know, we do really want to talk to Artie, because I know he expresses interest in the solar, and so I want to make sure the loop is closed with him.
So I haven't, I haven't discussed it definitively. I know that, I know that he did. He's also not present in it, and I didn't know that you also had a conversation with him.
I haven't spoken with him. I just know he expressed interest.
So, you know, I wish he was here.
I think he would be great for the solar, if you feel comfortable with that.
I, I'm sorry, I did give him the talk yesterday.
I think Artie would be comfortable with the solar, since that's something that he knows a lot about. If you feel comfortable with it, if not, I would be fine with either way, but...
I mean...
I'm also thinking that it...
It's better at town meeting if we have a split of presenters. If we don't have the chair presenting everything. So if Artie's interested in presenting solar, I would suggest that you talk to Artie and let him do it, if he wants to do it, and you do the housing.
So do you have any?
I mean, I...
Either that or we draft it.
Sure. Do you want me to do it?
You want to do the housing?
I mean, I don't have a comment or an opinion either way. I mean, it's just, it's whatever the, you know, I mean, yes, it's to your point, it would be, it would be easier to have this discussion if Artie was here, you know what I mean, than we could assign, because this is our last meeting before, or we do have that joint one, but this is the last meeting for town meeting.
Right. Is there, Lee, do you see any issue if, and whether Artie should affirmatively disclose that he earns a living by solar and would potentially benefit by these regulations? Is that an issue?
I don't know that he would necessarily benefit by the regulations. I think the regulations, I think his business should, should really be about the same. Because right now, there are no regulations, actually. If anything, it might cut down his business, because right now, is there, he's, his business isn't regulated at all.
We're making, we're making solar use at home far more permissible than would otherwise be the case. Like, we don't have current regulation for ground mounted.
Which is why anybody could put in a ground mounted right now. We don't prohibit it.
I don't think there's a conflict of interest. I hear what you're saying.
Right.
I don't think there's a conflict of interest. I agree with Paul. I think it's better if things are done by different people, so that it feels like we're like kind of more of a unified group.
Okay.
And I don't think, I mean, it would be the same as if I'm on hone and I designed housing, that I couldn't participate in discussing housing, right? Because...
But you do when you want.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So I'm making the same argument.
Right. And he's an architect, so, you know, does that...
Does that mean I can't talk about buildings?
No, absolutely, of course.
I mean, the other, maybe, solution is, you know, if he, if he does it, but in the beginning will disclose, because it's a, it's a perceived conflict. I understand it probably isn't a conflict, but there's a perception that it might be a conflict. And I know that that has been discussed with some town meeting members before. So maybe just some sort of, you know, disclaimer in the beginning to, to say that there is none, but wanted to fully disclose that, you know, this is something, the verbiage can be, but, you know, just because there's a perception of it. I agree, it's probably not a conflict.
You're okay with that, Lee?
I think that's fine. It's just, I think it's up to you and Artie to work out.
So...
Who's going to do it? I just want to make sure it was worked out.
So I'll, I'll reach out to him, and, you know, and if he's comfortable to do it, that's great. He'll, he's assigned by the board, and if not, then I, then I guess I'll do it.
Yeah. And you'll be great at it, too.
Unless, unless you want to do it because you want diversity of...
No, no, no. I think you should do it.
Is Artie away? You'll hit me back.
I have no idea.
Because we are, we're exactly two weeks from town meeting. So, you know, if he's going to present, he has to prepare his presentation.
So we need to know, I think, this week, because Kate asked me, actually, who is presenting. So we need to close this week.
Okay. Do you want to reach out to Artie, or I can reach out to Artie, and then...
Why not still doing pre-recorded?
No, that's done.
No, no.
That's done.
No, why don't you talk to him directly?
So town meeting will go forward.
You guys, you guys resolve it.
Okey-dokey. I will.
And then let me know, and I'll let Kate know that you're doing the Housing Authority definitely.
What was that? I'm sorry.
The Housing Authority article, and then somebody, somebody's going to need to report on the citizens' petition. Do you want to?
I'll, I'll, I'll take that.
Okay.
And I'll take that, you know, after we resolve, because we're going to discuss it tonight. It's on our agenda to discuss. We've got five minutes now, so we have, the way I see the citizens' petition, this is with respect to the Article 44, to amend the zoning bylaw related to floor area ratio in single-family homes. We've received additional comments from residents on this. Alex, thanks for including in our packet, and I'll read those into the minutes when we get to correspondence. But just before we discuss our options and the vote, for the record, I just wanted to mention on this particular agenda item, the fact that this question is about how size is a priority for the planning board, and that it's already on our planning calendar for action later this year to strike up a special committee, which I intend for us to do. Lee, I'd, you know, want to have a conversation with you and Katie to figure out how much of the goals should be established beforehand for the committee. I think that's probably a good idea. And then also come up with an idea of who should be on the, you know, the composition of the committee.
Yeah.
And then we'll discuss that with the full board. So our options tonight are very simple. We either approve it, oppose it, or recommend the town meeting refer it back to the planning board for, for further study. Is there anyone on the board, by the way, that supports approving the article in its current form? So that's not an option that we're going to support at this time. So let's discuss the purpose and the differences between referring it back to the planning board and just rejecting it outright. Paul, do you, how do you see the purpose and the effect of either...
Well...
...referring it or rejecting it?
First of all, I don't, I'm not sure that, that a motion to refer should come from the planning board as a planning board. If a motion to refer is going to be made, I would like to leave that to a town meeting member.
Right.
As a motion to refer.
I check the town council on that. The board itself would make the motion, but...
We, we could, but I think politically, it would be better if it came from a town meeting member than from the board.
You, Justin and I are town meeting members, and we could...
Right, but, yeah, but...
Someone else other than...
But you're making a presentation before town meeting members get a chance to speak.
Right.
So I'm suggesting that if, if we were in favor of a motion to refer, you know, I'm just saying, I would rather it not be part of your presentation as coming from the planning board as a board. Having said that, I also feel that a motion to refer, given what you just said, which is that the whole issue of the sizes of homes and teardowns in town is something that we have on our agenda, that we have been talking about, we want to have. I think a motion to refer is very limited in scope to the FAR.
Right.
Which is the bylaw that's being presented in that, so that it runs on a, on a parallel path, on a different path than where we want to go, which is to include a lot of other things besides just FAR.
And to get clarity on our goals. I'm not...
And part of the reason why I want to suggest that our position is that we reject the motion rather than a motion to refer is for that purpose exactly, that we've, I feel that the presentation of just, just the FAR issue doesn't do the trick, doesn't solve the problem.
Right. I agree with that.
Right. We have to do more investigation.
Yeah, it's more investigation for a lot of other issues, which is setbacks, you know, especially lot area coverage.
And more coverage, yeah.
Is, is a lot more relevant, I think, to the issue than floor area ratio. I mean, there's nothing wrong with floor area ratio being part of it.
Right.
It's a component, it's a component.
So, so I'm in favor of the planning board having the recommendation that it be rejected.
So is that a motion?
That's my motion, yeah.
So Paul's motion is that the planning board recommend town meeting reject Article 44.
I second that, actually. Yeah.
Justin seconds that. Any discussion between that and referral? Then I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously. The position of the board will be to recommend town meeting reject Article 44. And if I may, I would also say at town meeting, and remind town meeting, in my discussion of this article and the board's position, is that exactly as you said, that we, it's on our calendar, it's a priority, that we intend to strike up another committee to focus on this issue later in the year, that would have a robust public process, so we ensure great engagement from our residents to help shape the policy, and also that we would have studies, hydrology studies, fiscal impact studies on the effect on home values and so on, that it's not just by the board itself, and that, and that we would come back to town meeting within a reasonable period of time. Depending on how long it'll take to get the studies, and I don't know how we're going to finance the studies, given that town, given that FINCOM is...
Because we're going to have the appropriation, hopefully, in July of our, of our monies for planning studies.
So, so we'll want to add that, you know, specifically also the parking, you know, parking study as well.
Stantec, right?
So, all right, so then that's, I think that's resolved. And I think that gets us two minutes before our, our hearing for 7:30 with respect to the tennis courts and the high school. Summer schedule...
Do we want to wait for Artie for the summer schedule, or try to make a pass at it? No?
What do you need to...
Let's talk about it pre-town meeting, when we meet pre-town meeting, because I don't want to wait till May 14th, because I'm starting to get inquiries, but we can talk about it pre-town meeting.
Do you have, what do you have in the bike? What do you have in the, by way of projects coming down?
I would grab my notes and everything, maybe we can talk later about it, but I just get a lot of inquiries...
Okay.
...about our schedule and whatnot.
Okay, very good. So it is 7:29. We have a hearing at 7:30, so why don't we take the moment now and invite town council, Stacy Mulroy, town council, and also the director of Parks and Rec for the town, Chris, and Cindy, and anyone else?
We're going to have Tim toss it up right now.
What's your, what's your name, sir?
Jonathan Crowe.
Okay, why don't you guys all come up? Is that, is that it for now?
That's for the other, yeah, we'll come up.
All right. And we'll just, we're at 7:30 now. And I'm, before you guys start, I'm going to go back to my well-organized notes, presuming they are well-organized, which they seem to be. So this is a public hearing, for a continued public hearing, related to an amendment to the major project, major site plan special permit number 2004-01, with the town of the petitioner relating to a proposal to renovate four existing courts and to add four new tennis courts. We will start this session of the hearing by reading into the record the additional materials that we've received since our last session, and then I'll ask town council and town staff and others to provide us with updated information. And, and then that will be followed by public comment, and we're happy to hear from, you know, from everyone tonight as we did last time. When we get to the public comment period, I'll review our ground rules for, for discussion. We've received the following pieces of correspondence on this application since our last hearing. We have a letter dated April 5 from Ryan Madden, the director of athletics for the Needham High School, explaining why the school is requesting eight courts. We also have a letter dated April 10 from a group of residents, including the Danenbergs, the O'Learys, the Kilburn Petersons, Barbara Fitzgerald, and Harriet Den, requesting a reduction in the number of courts, with an explanation of the impacts and the conditions they'd like to see imposed. We also have an email dated April 3 from Butters, Jim, and Ellen Dudley of Webster Street, explaining impacts from existing tennis court users and from road construction. And this, Alex, I'd like you to share Ellen's comments specifically to Charis, because she made, she made, makes reference in her correspondence that if there's construction in the front of their house, in addition to construction in the back of their house, that may be overly intrusive on a number of residents on Webster Street. So I'd like to see that our director of public works is aware of that, and, and then maybe invite Ellen...
Oh, you did send that through.
You did already?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we, an email dated April 22 from Paul Sigenthaler, town meeting member from precinct E of 1049 Webster Street, with additional attachments. And then finally today, a letter from Stacy Mulroy, director of Parks and Recreation... then finally today, a letter from Stacy Mulroy, director of parks and recreation, explaining why the town, separate from the need for the school, requires eight courts. So Chris, would you like to introduce everyone here and pick us off?
Sure, and I'll turn it over to you, well, with the secretary, Jonathan Charwicke from Actipitas, Stacy Mulroy, director of park and recreation, Artie Rapi, project manager, and myself, but I will turn it over to Jonathan for the presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, members of the planning board. I'd like to see everyone again from a few weeks ago. So as we came to you a few weeks ago, we're looking at the expansion from four tennis courts to eight tennis courts. Per our previous meeting, this was the previous design where we had eight tennis courts, replacing the four existing in kind, and then the new four tennis courts with a shade structure in the middle. Generally, there were five concerns, I believe, in one of the emails that you mentioned from the neighbors, issues with pickleball, which I think we can address a little bit further from our last hearing. We also have the high school varsity tennis coach here talk a little bit about the need for why we need to have eight courts in lieu of four or any additional courts. We'll talk a little bit about general sound site and other disturbances which were part of the concerns, maintenance and enforcement specifically related to pickleball, and then the placement of the new courts. So one of the first things we were asked from the last hearing was to move the proposed new courts as far away from the neighbors as possible, and as we discussed in the previous meeting, the location of that shade structure was sort of dictating where those courts went. So in doing that, we reacted by looking at shifting those four courts toward the parking lot. That gets us additional green space between neighbors and where we're clearly outside of that...
I don't see there, what the delta is. How many feet have you moved in that new...
We were about twenty-nine feet in the previous, and we're forty-three, forty-three feet now, so it's about a fourteen-foot delta.
Okay, and if you scroll out for a second, why can't you move it another ten feet closer to the parking lot?
So here are a few of our constraints. I'll blow this up a little bit. So we have the memorial area with benches that we're respecting and staying away from, and then we also have this pinch point right here. So this is about, only about fifteen, twenty feet. This is a three-to-one slope down to this walkway. Though, the proposed fences are twelve-foot high, so from a spatial perspective, that space becomes very narrow and very tight and very unforgiving, so...
I'm sorry, I didn't get where it is that you're talking about. Do you have a pointer that you can...
Right between, in this pinch point right here.
Up here, okay.
Yep, correct. So where the existing courts remain, we have about a five-foot wide walkway, and then this grass strip in here, again, it's only about a ten-foot strip of grass, a three-to-one slope, so, you know, about three feet of grade change in that small space, and then with the fencing, it gets extremely tight. Granted, could we get closer? We did some retaining walls, we could, but that space is going to just feel very narrow and very tight. Usually a spatial perspective, you know, if you have a twelve-foot high fence, you want twenty-four, twenty-five feet of width between those fences for a two-to-one ratio. So we're getting a little pinched in there, but again, you know, based on the discussions we previously had, this is as close as we feel comfortable in this current layout.
So, well, let me go ahead and discuss.
You're fourteen feet in.
We've been able to push it fourteen feet in this configuration if we leave the courts in this current orientation.
So your twelve-foot fences, they go around the perimeter of four courts each?
Correct, so the existing tennis courts is a twelve-foot high fence, and we can...
Going around the four courts?
The top ones, yep, existing. So we're going to maintain those heights, and then the proposed courts would have twelve feet as well. And we've also discussed along, well, say, page north of the existing courts, if we need to raise that fence height to, say, fourteen or sixteen feet to help for balls going on the edges and properties, we'll certainly take a look at that.
Okay, but you don't have a fence between, like, I'm seeing this white area, which I assume is a walkway?
That, the white, this white dash line?
Yeah.
That is our twenty-foot, five, twenty-five-foot setback from the property line.
Between the two new courts?
Between, you've got two courts and a, right, that area there.
A walkway.
A walkway.
Yep.
So is there a twelve, are there two twelve-foot high fences on either side of the walkway?
There will be twelve-foot high fence on the three sides, and then four feet adjacent to the walkway, so if people are standing...
Four feet adjacent to the walkway.
Correct.
So there's a fence there, but it's only four feet.
Correct. For spectator views, people are on that walkway, they're able to look rather than looking through the twelve-foot high fence. But in general, around, adjacent to the neighbors, on the outside edges here, and adjacent to the parking lot, those are all twelve-foot high chain link fences, and then the same thing here. You know, we would be looking at, call it fourteen, sixteen-foot high chain link fence up here, twelve foot along the edges, twelve foot between the courts, and then four foot where people can view and spectate.
What is the current height of the fence right now?
Twelve feet.
Twelve feet. So you would be increasing it to four to the system, is that what you're saying?
On the northern...
On the Webster Street area.
Correct.
Correct.
In typical tennis court...
And possibly on the neighbor's side?
We can certainly talk to that. Yep.
You know, is the, I'm surrounded with tennis courts themselves, what material is that? Is that asphalt, or is that grass, or green, or turf?
So the courts themselves, the green and blue that you see, that's all the post-tension concrete, so that's all paved surface. The lighter shade would be typical cement concrete pavement, and then everything else would be alone seed.
So how much additional impervious surface area are you adding? Quite a bit.
Offhand, I don't know the exact number.
No other calculation?
Offhand, I don't, but we've accounted for that for all our stormwater management. So we're handling all the increase in impervious, so we're not increasing the rate of runoff from what's there currently.
And is the pitch, is the pitch down towards the parking lot, or is there any at all, we want to avoid any adverse impact going to the residents of Rosemary.
Everything is going toward the parking lot.
Sorry, there's two people talking at once, I couldn't hear you. So I'm happy to hear from both of you, though, just one at a time.
Sure.
So who wants to?
I get dressed.
Okay.
So on the existing courts, the sideline that is adjacent to the neighbors, that's the high point, and all the stormwater pitches toward the parking lot currently, and that will be the same. The grades of the new courts are pretty much the same as the existing. In this configuration, this edge is high, and all the stormwater is pitching toward the parking lot. So everything is getting funneled generally into this area. There's new stormwater management that will be placed in the parking lot, and that will tie to the existing subsurface drainage that then outlets south, as everything does now.
I just want to be perfectly clear, forgive my ignorance here. You're saying that the elevation on the page left side of the new tennis courts is higher than the elevation where the tennis courts kind of are near the side of the parking lot, that's correct?
Correct. The new courts are generally two and a half to three feet higher in elevation of the existing courts.
And on the page north, the elevation is higher there and lower near the parking lot of those four courts?
Correct, it slightly pitches, call it a flip from the property line toward the parking lot.
Okay, all right, yeah. Thank you very much, you can continue.
Sure.
I have a question to ask you. I know that, how do you access the tennis courts in general? Is that why you have the walkway in between?
Correct. So if you're in the parking lot or at the school here, there's currently existing sidewalk that will take you to this space in there here, you can walk between the courts, and there's gates to get into the courts. There's also one gate here, and there's a double gate here, so essentially you can get onto this court while, if someone's playing, someone has the ability to go through here and get to those back courts, so they're not disturbing who's playing. Same thing with the new courts, this existing walkway, this is a handicap accessible access point along the parking lot. You either can come down here into the court here to get to the far side, or come in the middle to get to the middle courts, and then go to the far side. So we're making it so that if you want to get onto one of the open courts, you're not disturbing other people if they're currently playing.
I mean, the only reason I ask, and I know this is the most efficient way of doing it, was if the problem is that pinch point on the right, upper right-hand side, that if they were together and the walkway was on the exterior, which would mean more, you know, more surface area there?
Sure.
Then you could push it even further in.
Yep.
And the same thing with the other side. So that's why I was asking, I mean...
Yep. So, I'm sorry, do you want to go?
Just that there is a difference in elevation also, the elevation for those existing tennis courts, is different from the elevation?
No, I understand. I was just trying to compress it, to push it.
We have another subject.
Because, yeah.
Okay.
So as we look at this option, and again, we were trying to react to some of the comments, get this as far away from the neighbors as possible. Obviously, moving the shade structure out there gives us a little bit more space, but as we looked at this a little bit, we think there's another option that would give us a little more green space between the courts and the neighbors. So we've also been able to rotate these courts now that we've removed the shade structure to get these courts to align in the same north, north-south orientation that the existing ones, which is one of the initial comments some of the advocates for tennis in the community had asked for. So by doing that, we're pretty much holding, this is still the pinch point down here. So this corner right here is twenty-nine feet from the existing property line. I'm going to go back one or two slides. We have a little bit more space here, but in the initial option, we only had about twenty-nine feet from the entire end line of those courts to the property line. So in this, what I'll call the third option, which is the preferred option over the second one I just showed, this is our twenty-nine-foot pinch point, but we gain a lot more space once we get here, and obviously with the course angle, there's a lot more green space allowed between the existing and proposed courts and the back of the neighbor's property. Same with this location over here.
And why, and why, you said this is the preferred option. Why is this preferred from option two?
This puts all the courts in a, in the same orientation from a solar perspective.
Okay.
So, you know, one of the challenges...
Okay, gotcha.
Because one of the challenges with the previous option is the size of the shade structure we were working with didn't allow us to get this into appropriate configuration because of our site constraints. By removing the shade structure altogether, we're able to get these orientations appropriate. We think this is the, as far as we can push these courts toward the parking lot from an accessibility standpoint to make these work, we still have an accessible route in through here that's pretty shallow, and then I will blow this up a little bit, again, because we have this little bit of a pinch point here with the grade change, there is a set of stairs in through here to make up that two-and-a-half-foot grade change.
And that's accessible, though, by wheelchair through the parking lot?
Along the parking lot, correct. So if you come out of a parking spot here, you can get to the upper courts through this walkway and through here, or you can get to the lower courts, and then this just provides good circulation, because honestly, if a student or a player's here and they want to get over here, they're going to be walking through there anyway, so the stairs make some sense.
So can you scroll down a little bit, please?
Sure.
And then zoom in on the bottom half of the page, right, yeah, keep going, a little more to the right. There you go, that's great. I still, you still have a lot of feet between the, that walkway and the parking lot. Why not, like, and your concern was that, I'll ask you just to follow me on that, with the mouse, if people at home can see, but you still, you're at a pinch point.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the...
I couldn't see that from where I was sitting. And what if, what if this was...
What's in that area, what the pinch point is?
Sorry?
What's in that area?
Right here, so this is a memorial structure.
A memorial structure.
With a grade change.
If you had, if you had instead of two sections, if you had one section, and you, is that enough to raise it up so you clear, you clear the memorial structure, or no?
It's going to make driving between the courts in case of emergency much harder. You see how we have a street over there? If we have an emergency and we want to utilize that road over there...
Over here?
Yes. Now you can go through the two tennis courts, so you can...
You can take an emergency vehicle. This is all the same grade?
We can make it work. If it's an emergency, you are not going to be able to have a bank of, you can definitely try to...
I understand. A worthy goal.
And we also do have a few existing trees along that edge, it's a little hard to see, but there's an existing tree here, existing tree here and here, there's a little bit of a line here, so we're trying to the best of our ability also to preserve those as best as possible, so obviously the little more we pinch here, we're getting into those drip zones and, you know, potentially impacting the health of those trees in the long term. I mean, we could certainly look to see if there's a little bit more room to pinch. You know, right now, this walkway is about one and a half percent, it's a pretty shallow pitch. We need to make sure we're getting stormwater from the courts, again, moving this way. You know, if we make this a little bit flatter, you know, shifting this over could affect that a little bit, because, again, we're trying, all of the courts right now still are pitching, see this line here is a contour, so basically all the wire is moving in a diagonal direction, going to be collected in a catch basin and then sent into the chambers that we're adding into the parking lot.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any benefit of moving the upper tennis court in and creating a different universal walkway that has the right slope?
Do you mean the northern court, these two?
Moving it in, I know that you're trying to create an access with your, but you have a bunch of steps there, and I don't know the grading plan at all, but I'm just looking at the steps. If you move all of the tennis court over, then it becomes more universally accessible because you'll have less steps, or you'll have, you know, or you'll, or you can grade it so that you, I don't know, I'm just, I know that it's nice to have them stacked, but in the sense of bringing them in, you have a green space in between it, unless, are you doing a shade structure, a new shade structure there?
We've removed the shade structure from the scope altogether.
So to Natasha's point, could you move that, the northern court, I mean, the...
Is there a benefit? It could be that there's a grading problem, but I'm just bringing you...
I mean, technically, I think we have the ability to shift that over five, ten feet or so. From a design perspective, this has a much better flow as it relates to the walkways and everything aligning. You know, obviously, you know, we're looking at this two-dimensionally over an aerial, you know, when you are in the field, these will be angled a little bit, but I think there's explanation because they're solar orientations, you know, if...
The only reason I bring it up is because that creates a non-universal condition, right? So if you have steps, it means that people in wheelchairs can't go through, right?
Correct, but they, but their accessible route is in through here, they still can get...
But you have a different one, so it's not universal.
Correct, but you're...
Except if you're handicap, you go that way, if you're, you know, I know that maybe you can't do anything about it, I'm just wondering, if this moves over, this seems like a shallow here, so then you create a bigger plaza, it's like, you know, you create a bigger plaza, if you're still, then people can come in and don't have to, everyone can go through the same way. I don't know if you can do it, I was just wondering.
I'm a little wishy-washy, I don't see how you can do it.
We'd have to take a look at it. Offhand, I'm not sure, we'd have to take a look at it.
It might not work. I was just bringing it up because then it pushes it in further, and then you create one plaza where everyone can access. It won't be as, I understand why you did it, but I'm not, and it could, it may be the only solution of this particular. I just wanted to know if there was a way of creating a thicker sidewalk that could have, though?
Yeah, I think...
Does the pitch start here, where it drops off?
The parking lot has pitch, so really, right where we're here, the parking lot starts to grade up at a three-percent pitch or so. I think, in a scenario like this, where, you know, in this option, we had no physical connection...
Right.
Because either we would have stairs, or we would have to make something work in through there.
But it lets everyone go through the same path. This one's like you go through two different paths based on your ability.
Correct.
Which is, yeah.
But as it relates to meeting mass ADA codes, we're meeting all the requirements as it relates to getting ADA accessibility.
No, I know, no, I know that, but...
Sure.
But the intent of it is for everybody to go the same way, if possible, if possible.
Understood.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
I don't remember your mentioning this, but we got something in from Paul Sigenthaler.
Yeah, it was him.
Okay. And one of the suggestions, he, he, he made some suggestions for possible concessions, which I found intriguing. And one of them was to say, which would save some space, would be to have the two tennis courts that are at the bottom of the screen be singles courts instead of doubles courts. Did you look at that as a possibility?
Oh, we haven't, no.
Is it something that you might consider, or do you think that that doesn't really work out for the, for the school's athletic program?
Mike, Mike, sorry. I'd like to invite you to come up, bring your chair, there's an extra microphone for you there, if you can say your name for the record and your association, that'd be great.
Sure, I'm Drew Lawrence, I'm the boys tennis coach.
I see.
My first thought is no, I look at the whole facility much more than practicing, and we do have singles matches that we require to play, but in terms of getting bodies on courts and more kids to be able to play, I always default to the doubles courts.
Got you.
I haven't given it much thought, quite honestly.
Okay. I just found that an intriguing suggestion.
Do you want to continue with your presentation?
So currently, this is the preferred design from the applicant, in lieu of the previous design that was submitted, part of our initial application. To just touch on a few of the concerns as we discussed in the previous meeting, the applicant is open to providing a condition as part of the permit that no pickleball lines will be permanently installed.[1767.54]
I'm actually going to interrupt you there for a second because one of the piece of correspondence that we received from the neighbors included evidence from the town's website of, of notification of the pickleball schedule at these courts. And forgive me, I'm not actually distracted, but I do have to give myself some insulin. So one of the additional conditions that I, that I'm going to recommend the board impose is that any current reference to pickleball at this location, as of the date of the, you know, of our decision, be immediately removed. Go ahead.
Sure, thank you. At last night's Park and Recreation Commission meeting, the commission voted to remove the current pickleball lines at the tennis courts. And so we are in the process of updating those policies for the pickleball courts and tennis courts.
Excellent, great, thank you very much. And we're grateful for, you know, the commission's recognition of the concerns at this particular site. Did you want to continue?
Sure, I'll, I'll touch on a few of the other items. Skipping down just to concern number five, location of the court placements, I think we've done what we can at this moment to, to try and get those courts as far away from the neighbors as possible. While also meeting some requirements for the north south, the existing. General sound, sight and other disturbances. So as we previously discussed, we'll, we'll look at raising the fence heights along the adjacent property over the 12 feet, whether it be 14 or 16, whatever we feel is appropriate to try, you know, keep balls from disturbing those neighbors and, and adding to some of those disturbances. Maintenance and enforcement, I think that was very specific to enforcement of no pickleball, so you sort of spoke about that. I think the last concern, again, I apologize for being out of order, is the need for eight pickleball courts. And Drew, do you want me to speak to-
Eight tennis courts?
I'm sorry, eight tennis courts, I apologize.
It's okay, Drew, it's okay. They're just throwing it at you, buddy.
Exactly. So, so if someone from the team wants to talk a little about sort of the, the need for eight courts and, and supporting that?
Sure. I'm, actually, I, I just want to touch on concern number four, maintenance and enforcement. I know maintenance was a concern for some of the neighbors as, as well as the community. I actually met with a, a different tennis court vendor regarding separate courts and we talked about post-tensioned concrete quite a bit. He told me that post-tensioned concrete tennis courts have started, it started in 1988. So while the 25-year warranty is in place, they have been along much, they have been around much longer and there have been zero issues with any of the post-tensioned concrete. So unlike a lot of facilities, the post-tensioned concrete is much more of a set it and forget it. So, you know, painting, that kind of upkeep sure, but the cracking, the, the frost heaves that New England courts generally have, do not, they have not seen that happen with post-tensioned concrete since 1988. So I just wanted to touch on that because I did meet with them today. As far as the eight courts, as you know, the, the high school athletics sent in a recommendation of support for the eight courts for various reasons. So did Park and Recreation Department along with the commission. I don't know if we want to go through those items, but there are a lot of options and opportunity with a court. It's not, certainly it's pretty cut and dry as far as I'm concerned, maybe, I'm sure, as Drew's concerned for the, the high school athletics, correct. But for Park and Rec, there's a lot of opportunities for growth for Park and Rec. If you, Alex, I don't know if you can share screen with that.
What are you looking for?
The Park and Recreation letter of support.
The letter, sure.
Thank you. And I do apologize for the tardiness in this-
It was added today.
-letter getting to you between meeting with the, we did meet with the neighbors a couple of weeks ago and then vacation week tends to be a little bit crazy for Park and Rec. Bingo. The one above. So we just broke down some of the numbers for our-
Just sharing my screen.
Of course, yes, of course.
Thank you.
For our seasonal tennis lessons. So we run tennis lessons from spring, summer and fall for each year. This chart goes back to fall of 2021. In 2020, we did not run any specific lessons due to the pandemic. 21 is when we first started, but we didn't bring the kids in yet and then, so this sort of itemizes the number of registrants that we get in our tennis lessons as well as the number of people that we had to waitlist due to the number of courts we have. In addition to these lessons, we do have leagues and tournaments that we have not been able to participate in. USTA runs a league in Needham, Norwood, Westwood, Medfield and Wellesley. And while we join the league, we cannot host at all because of the, the lack of more than four courts. So that's the tennis lessons. If you want to scroll down to our summer camp tennis academy, which is our by far most popular tennis, uh, summer camp that we have, we have a basic summer camp, we have drama camp, we have sports camp. Tennis camp is the most popular of all of our camps. It does max out and so having more courts in one specific area, you know, we can't, if we split up our camps into two different schools, that increases the number of counselors by two, so double the counselors, double the site supervisors, double the healthcare professionals that we need on site to run a camp. And adding some four courts to one site significantly increases our ability to bring in more residents and kids for our summer camp as well as we hire quite a bit of Needham young adults for, to be counselors and site supervisors at our camp. So that would also increase the ability to hire more staff from our community.
Excellent. Chris, do you have anything else that you want to add?
Nothing for me.
Anything from the commission? So before we go into, I, I, comments from the, the planning board, although we've had a few already, I'd like to actually make some space so we adhere in front of the microphone. So if you wouldn't mind, if, you know, if you could join your friends back from the commission and then we have a space available, ease friendly, we think. So don't be afraid. Is there anyone, we'll rotate between here and, and on Zoom. And just to remind everyone of our general rules for, to ensure accuracy in our public record and to be, create a fair platform for everyone to be, to, to be heard, we ask you to state your name and address clearly for the record. We, to try and get through as many people as possible, please keep your remarks to three minutes or so. And then if you have multiple points to make, we're happy, and if you need more than three minutes, we're happy to come back to you after we've heard from anyone else who's already wanted to, who wants to speak, who hasn't had a chance yet to speak. Please address your comments through the chair. And then if someone has already said something that you agree with, it's perfectly acceptable to say, I agree with the previous speaker, it has the same impact on us. So more people can speak. And unless, so, and if there are other people that want to communicate to us, who's watching at home perhaps, you can write your comments by email to planning@needhamma.gov. A couple of comments that, one last comment is, we heard a lot about pickleball, pickleball last time. Were it clear that there is no pickleball here, so there's no need to talk about pickleball tonight. And, or picklegate, as someone I think referred to it. But I would also say that tonight, we're, we'd like to hear, I mean, we're particularly interested in, in new comments that we hadn't heard already before. So with that, let's go hands up, who would like to speak? Excellent. So I saw this woman first. We're, we're going to rotate around between people on Zoom. If there's anyone on Zoom that wishes to speak to the question of tennis courts at the high school, please, on your screen, raise your hand and we'll come to you. In the meantime, you could come on up over here and again, state your name and address for the record, that would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Julie Danenberg.
Thank you.
Address, 36 Rosemary. Thank you for reading our concerns and addressing them. I just had a couple clarifying questions about some of them. I know I'm not allowed to say the P-word, but I just, there's one thing that we didn't talk about in terms of the sunset clause about how long, like beyond these people in the room, it will not be brought up year after year, if that could be included in the condition.
Thank you for raising the comment. We'll discuss that as a board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Secondly, I, you know, I love the idea of the camps, like, like it's play tennis, that sounds awesome. I'm just curious about the, the list that we were able to compile and I'm sure we missed some of the teams and clubs and whatnot that use the green space that will no longer be there where those people will go.
So it would be specifically for the school athletics, Drew, I don't know if you, we did talk to, talk to Ryan Madden, Director of Athletics during our site walk a couple of weeks ago, as well as we had an internal meeting earlier this week and he was confident that he could find additional spaces for those teams to practice. One of the things is that space is very convenient, you know, you can walk out the door, it's right there. But he is very confident, the schools have access to all of our fields in town until 6:00 PM. That is the, one of the bylaws for town, so they have lots of different opportunities and lots of different locations, so he was very confident. I know he texted me earlier, he is stuck at a volleyball game. So he cannot be here tonight, but Drew, I don't know if you have anything to add about that?
I talked to him yesterday about the same thing and he boiled it down to the fact that when, when groups that have used that have wanted to go somewhere else, he's been able to find it, they first kind of complained and then he's like, why have this spot for you, they're fine. A good example of that is Ultimate Frisbee used to play there and it's really not a big enough field for them. And then they found the field at the back of Newman Elementary School and they're, you know, happiest glances because it's a much better spot for them. And the spot is relatively small, so it's not the best spot for a lot of other things.
Thank you.
And of course, unbiased.
Okay, so that would apply to like the Mecca Girls Flag football, the summer camps, the Parks and Rec camps, the PE classes, like PE classes aren't going to be able to leave in the middle of the day, right, to go to other schools?
No, they won't be able to go, but they do have full access to the both turf fields as well as the magnificent baseball fields. And we have talked to the wellness group and they are also in support of the, the eight tennis courts.
And just in terms of the visual thing, I know it sounds like maybe a small thing with the height of the fence, but is it possible to include some more of a blockage like planting arborvitae or something so we're not staring out our backyard at a chain link fence?
Well, we, we have considered that and we will be looking during further stages of the project. But we would like the planning board not to make their approval conditional to providing arborvitae for this particular project at this stage. Particularly when we are satisfying all the requirements that the neighbors have. One of the things was move the tennis courts. We moved them further away, we want them to be rotated, we rotated them. We want to remove the shade structure, we removed the shade structure. We are not bringing the tennis, the tennis courts closer to the neighbors, we're moving them further away. So at this stage, we don't feel that adding additional arborvitae as a condition or on this stage of the project, we, we think that is too much of an overburden at this time. But we certainly can look into it and see what can be done in the future, but not at this stage.
It's a burden for a reason, financially?
Yes.
Okay. Just to make it clear, you know, to just say it's a burden is, you know, like a politician's way of saying, I'm not going to do it.
So for, I, I think for Park and Recreation, the commission can weigh in if they choose. I don't disagree with you. I wouldn't want the arborvitae to hinder the project moving forward. There's options to do adults or think about fundraising in the future.
I'll provide you as an example.
No, no, certainly, but that kind of thing could essentially-
Landscaping, really.
A vegetative barrier.
Yes, landscaping in general, I wouldn't want that to make the budget number grow so high that then we are asking for more money, but we could do an adult or look at it as a sort of sub fundraiser after the fact. I think the commission agrees that that is certainly an option we would like to look into, but we wouldn't want it to hinder the actual eight court project.
There is a warrant article for this year's annual town meeting to fund this project. And that's a number, you know.
Correct.
There's a number in front of town meeting that they have put together based upon what they've already gotten, which doesn't, and landscaping is very expensive. So the number I, I'm assuming here, but correct me if I'm wrong, I'm assuming here that the number that's in front of town meeting doesn't include the extra expense of landscaping, so they'd have to go back to town meeting to get a higher number, which couldn't happen until the earliest of fall, probably next, next spring, so.
That's the reason why we want a part of this project, what things can be done afterwards, after we get this project underway. We're perfectly happy to look into it.
Right. But it's important to know that the, the commission does understand your point of view and does want to work with you.
And just to clarify that that was kind of out of order, right, the, getting the budget approved before the planning board approval?
Well, that, we, we had that discussion last-
I remember you saying so, so.
I'm not going to rehash what I did last time.
I didn't disagree. So, yeah, and then I just wanted to also clarify one point about the maintenance and reinforcement. I don't personally think that was just related to pickleball. I think that was just in general, I don't have concerns about the maintenance of the actual court. I think it's just the significant increase in foot traffic with the trash and, and things blowing and I, that. And separately, I am having a very hard time visualizing the pitch going towards the parking lot because my current pitch yard is that the field is very flat and my yard is to my house. So I'm having a hard time figuring out how that's going to like turn all of a sudden to be pitched the other direction.
Can you recreate it?
Yes.
Yes.
So, so current, do you mind if I share my screen?
Sure. I don't know who you're asking, but you know.
Anyone, anyone will say yes. So the existing, currently right now, this is sort of the high end of the courts and everything, so this, this is all high through here. Everything generally pitches in this direction now. There's currently, I believe, at least two catch bases down here that collect all the storm wire that gets through here. You know, this is sort of a bowl as well, so this is all pitching down here and then these courts are all pitching here. For the most part, this is our existing low area. That will generally maintain the same here. So instead of this wire funneling to this low area, there's a channel drain that runs along this court. So all the storm wire that hits these courts will get into a drainage system that then ties into the parking lot. Here, as you can see, this is high, all this storm wire. No?
No, you're an engineer, we can't see those things.
So this is, this is still the high edge of the property. All the wire is still going to be moving in this general direction.
Are you raising the grade? She's saying, she's saying-
We are not going to be touching the grade near her property line. Five, 10 feet away from her property line, we're not touching.
There, there's no grading within the first 25 feet of the property line.
So you're, so-
We're not touching it.
Hold on a second.
I don't know what else to say. Sorry.
Well, you're adding concrete.
Thank you. I asked a second ago, are you raising the grade? And I've got two answers. On the one hand, you said yes, on the other hand, you said no. So I just want to get clarity and resolution now. Are you raising the elevation and the, or the grade or what other term you may want to use on that side towards Rosemary?
I'm going to let Jonathan?
All this grade is here, is not changing. That's what we're saying. These aren't what the houses are, we're not touching this grade in here. They are staying the same. It's high now, it's high, it's going to remain high.
The same elevation?
Same elevation, we're not touching it. What's happening is that this area in here, we are regading it so that the water can go this way right now. The grade is not appropriate for the tennis courts. So if we're changing the grades up in here, it's not near the property line.
Okay, so are you saying that there's water that's flowing onto your property from that area now?
No.
Okay.
I'm just worried that there's a lack of grass to be absorbed, because obviously this is not my area, I don't know. My visual, the visual is, there's all this field to absorb grass, now there's all this concrete and I know what you're saying about the grade, but it just feels like less space and it's going to start finding more grass.
So what they're saying is where the courts are, which is 14 or 43 feet from the property line, the elevation changes and it goes-
To grade away.
It's to grade away towards the, towards the parking lot. The grade up here is not changing near your, near your house or Barbara's house. changing near your, near your house or Barbara's house, but farther in on that, what's now the field, there'll be a, there'll be a gradual, uh, change in elevation to move the water towards the parking lot.
Away from your houses.
Away from your houses, where there is a large catch basin system for stormwater management, that, that is sized to handle the runoff from the impervious area.
Okay.
That's how that is designed.
You quoted that on the record, so we'll see.
And if it doesn't work.
Then what, right, I mean, that's a question, if it doesn't work, then what?
We are digging the parking lot in order to install the drainage field, it's not just exist, we installing is just part of this project.
Right, the project, exactly, so, um, yeah.
Water doesn't go uphill, goes downhill.
Thank you.
To answer your question on maintenance, um, we do have the park ranger, um, in fact, we just sent over, so, people that wanna use any of our courts are required to purchase court badges, we just sent the list over to the court badges, so now, this week is one of his weeks where he goes through and checks all the courts, uh, that will be the same there, we're also, um, so right now we have one park ranger that works, you know, 40 hours a week, um, we are looking to add additional park rangers, so that will help cover the times that he's not there as well.
I'm done, so you'll get back to me on that Sunset Claus piece?
Park rangers for the entire town.
We're not gonna get back to you.
Park rangers for the entire town, yes.
Got it.
Um, yeah, but we do, when there are, you know, major issues or something, we do focus on, have him focus on those areas, and then go back to the other areas, yes.
Although, if you wanna call me afterwards, you're welcome, you can get my number from Alex.
Well, you just let me know what, what you decide, thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, uh, gentleman in the back, your, your hand up, is that Paul? And then if we could also stop sharing the screen, Alex, and then see, uh, is there anyone else, okay? So, if you can say your name and address.
Paul Seigenthaler, 1049 Webster Street.
Thank you.
Town meeting member in Precinct E, I just wanted to sit for a minute and just, um, clarify, uh, the presentation that I sent in to you.
Yes.
Um, for the most, I won't repeat, uh, most of it comes, uh, was actually the poll justification for eight courts was done in conjunction with Coach Lawrence, um, a couple of years ago, we talked about that stuff, so I won't, um, uh, go through that again, I just wanted to say that I'm a tennis guy, and, um, and I want eight courts, and I think that shows eight courts are extremely important, um, I didn't think about the town programs, all I did- Coach, I did teach for Park and Rec for a while, um, very popular, and so, having more courts, I didn't realize we had such a waiting list, and so, it has helped even more, but for the high school, um, eight courts is the bare minimum, I'd like to remind the, uh, the board that had this high school project, which, for those of you who have been in town long enough, I know Paul's been here forever, um, didn't you carry the first flag over from Dedham? Well, anyway. This, this high school addition, which was done, I think now about 13 years ago, Paul and I had, each had daughters in the high school at the time, was rushed through in order to get SBA funds, and these tennis courts were a complete afterthought to that project, and all of a sudden, somebody said, hey, wait a minute, we don't have any tennis courts, oh, well, let's throw four over there. If this had been done properly when the high school was expanded, and I'm not trying to beat up anybody for this, but if it was done properly, we would've looked around, we would've said, it's a high school tennis program, we need eight courts, if you're looking at Newton North, that there's 10 courts, if you look at Newton South, there's 12 courts, so this is our, your communities, and this is, this is really what we need, um, my concessions there was just simply, I want eight courts, it was simply a matter of putting on my Speaker of the House hat, and trying to figure out, how do you get the sides together to some compromise, and, so I'd like you to take those compromises as reinforcement that eight courts is the bare minimum, you gotta have eight courts here, and if it requires what I thought were kinda unsavory compromises, we could work with those, and I can talk with Drew about that, I'm not gonna, you know, change his opinion, but I think a tennis program could work with two singles courts, but the important thing is eight courts, eight courts, eight courts. And, uh, one more quick thing that I didn't see in there, um, was that, keep in mind, if you have six courts and you do a match, five of them go to varsity right away, and now you still have JV, which is going one at a time on one court, and that's gonna take that tennis match and extend it through the dinner hour for the neighbors, so, the sound of tennis balls are gonna continue, um, much longer on that, that match than they would if there are eight courts and you can get them all through faster.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, anyone, thank you very much.
I wanna thank you for your presentation that you sent to us, because I think you did a great job.
You're welcome.
And you presented a lot of, um, suggestions, that I think were great, so, thank you, Paul.
Thank you, uh, anyone else, uh, Mark, if you wanna come up to the table?
Mark's son was also in the same class as my daughter and Paul's daughter, so, the three of us lived through it together.
It was 2007 or '08 that they actually did that work.
Yes.
So, it's Mark losing, 48 Macintosh Avenue, uh, at the risk of not exiting the building with all my limbs intact, I'm an advocate for the eight courts as well. More on the realm of other use, there aren't a lot of courts in town, this town has 30,000 people, Newman is closed to public access all day long during the school day because the kids are there, the high school is closed to public access, the, the tennis teams use Newman and Mills in the rest of the day, so the only, I, I'm, I'm not working full-time anymore, I would love to play at 10:00 in the morning or 2:00 in the afternoon, and the only place to go is Mills, which is being shared with the pickleball, the lovely pickleball people that everybody is enjoying so much, um, and I just think that if you can get the high school team practicing at the high school, the entire team there, uh, that frees up Newman late afternoon and evening, uh, and gives much more opportunities for people who aren't joining the private, the two private court clubs that are in town, uh, and then the last thing I wanna say is that tennis is one of the few sports where the boys and the girls both have the seasons at the same time, and my son ran track and cross-country, and those both have seasons for boys and girls at the same time, and they practiced together, they went to meets together on the bus, you won't find any parent of any of those kids that participated in those co-ed, uh, practices and team events, that won't tell you it was a great thing for their kids, to have young freshmen seeing seniors interacting with girls, and girls with boys, understanding how the, I got, just an example for how they can, uh, get together and practice and support each other in a different way than they would in classes and in school, so, uh, I just wanted to make that point, that that's, I think that's an important thing to consider, uh, in keeping the eight courts, so, thank you.
Thank you very much, if there are other people that wishes to speak, the woman in the back, that'll, that'll come to you, thank you very much.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
I'm Julia Salmoni, I'm at 18 Rosemary Street, um, thank you again, everybody, for all the time and consideration, one of the first questions I have was, I understand, it's very clear there's some compelling reason for eight courts, um, but I recall the last meeting that there was a request to see what six would look like, just to see what that could possibly serve as for multi-use space, um, I think my neighbors and I were expecting to see something of that nature today, last week, at some point, um, so it's a little disappointing to see that something else wasn't presented, although I am hearing that, and, I am hearing there is a lot of desire to have eight courts here, I think the thing to keep in mind is that, something that we discussed last time was that, in order to host tournaments, we need five courts, we were gonna throw in, I think, one for good measure, um, which I think everyone else would be a proponent of, possibly, um, and I think the thing to keep in mind here is, we're talking about tennis courts at, you know, five or six, then we're adding two more, and I've heard the word facility being thrown around here, we have a full-blown tennis facility now, uh, impacting a dozen or so homes, values, family life, just something to keep in mind, because, one of the questions I would have for the group is, were there any other locations considered to put a swath of eight courts in town, 'cause if I look at Mills, for example, there's currently four, and possibly room to double that, um, and it doesn't seem to impact quite as many directly abutting properties, and I'm not trying to kick this can down the road where, you know, there's a facility in someone else's backyard, but I guess my question is, where else was considered for eight courts? Is there a question, is, can I ask?
We don't really engage in back and forth with-
Oh, that's a problem, we can leave it, um, just wanted to put that out there, if there was consideration for that, um, and I hear-
I, I will just say that, um, that I, it's true, the planning board did ask to see a site plan for six courts, and it's clear to me, and maybe my colleagues, that although that's what the board's requested, the town, for its recreation program, and for the academic program, are, are, um, are advancing a program of eight courts, eight courts only, they're not looking to make a change to, to six courts, so, um, you want other comments as well, though?
Yes, okay, so I guess that's, I don't think the neighbors were, it was brought to their attention that six was gonna be completely out of the question at this point, um, but I do, again, like I said, understand that there is a, um, a desire for eight, um, which, again, as a, as a competitive athlete, that is quite luxurious for one sport to have the ability and the privilege to have all of these aspects, um, I think the thing is, people do get shifted around, I know for me, I would be shifted all over town, some in, you know, at various times, um, I didn't play tennis, but I, you know, I do understand that, um, it, it, I just think people can note that there, this is a, one particular place that has a lot of different interests, and it seems like a lot of space devoted to one particular sport, one particular function, um, when there's also some benefits to possibly maintaining that green space that we were speaking of again, and could also alleviate some of these issues that seem to be a little bit unclear about the grading, and where the, where the water's going, and whatever it is, um, and people are just gonna have to trust that there's not gonna be a problem with that, but, to the best of my knowledge, at this point, the only other non-vertical gra, that would be the only other non-vertical grass space that could be multipurpose, for people to just even sit there, um, put a bench, whatever it may be, um, I think it's something just to consider, because, again, it's, eight is a facility, and it is a luxury, um, to have something like that, while a lot of other people in situations are being displaced because of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Wanted to speak.
Diane Federko, 356 Hill Chris Road, and I'm the retired girls' tennis coach of 25 years, and you do need eight courts, and as people said, one of them is now you can have the varsity and the JV playing together, before, varsity's playing one place, JV's playing somewhere else, you don't get that team cohesion, another factor is for practice, Mills would be great in some respects, but the high school is much easier for the kids to get to for practice, in other words, if you go to Mills, someone's gotta get a car, someone's gotta pick someone up and take them there, um, and, in comparison to other towns, um, we always, it was, it was actually tough, and, and Drew will tell you, we worked more hours than anybody else did, because we would have the four courts, and then you would have to wait and play your last match, some nights I didn't get home until 7:30 at night, and that would be true for some of the kids, but they had homework, so I'd say, go ahead, go home, so again, we're gonna build, you build cohesion with having the eight courts.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, does anyone else that wishes to speak in the room, the gentleman in the, in the back?
Yeah, John O'Leary, a 50-year resident of Needham from 46 Rosemary Street, um, I appreciate the chance to be heard, and I appreciated the chance to be heard at the last planning board meeting as well, but, last time, it was difficult, because the first thing that the neighbors heard about this project was in the public notice for this planning board hearing, and the first time we, we got to see that the plans was at that April 2nd meeting, or in the packet that went out before it, and tonight, the first time I see where the new courts are gonna be located is on a, on a PowerPoint screen at the meeting, I've never been able to look, I don't know, as I sit here right now, I saw two different plans presented, how far are the courts from my home, is there one, uh, visual that I can look at, so I can measure on the screen how far from my hammock, which is from, and my chicken coop, how far are these tennis courts? Um, I, I mean, it's a question, Mr. Chairman, that if I could get the visual back up of the proposed design, if that would be-
Yes, I, I believe we did ask the question of the measured setback from the property lines, and I think-
He's asking more about what's on his property, beyond his property line.
Yeah, that's why we're bringing it up.
Yeah. And, and can I-
Yes, please, I, I'm just, one second, as, as you do that, I, uh, for people at home, 'cause we're sharing the screen, so they can, 'cause they won't be able to see him, if you could follow along on the mouse, and move your mouse, so people can see what he's referring, pointing here in the room.
So, here's where my hammock is, here's where the chicken coop is, okay? What is the distance from this part of the tennis court to my property line?
Twenty-nine feet.
The pinch point would be 29 feet from this corner to the property line, and then the, the distance extends as the fence goes away from the property line.
So, so that's, that's from here?
Correct.
So, 29 feet, and the minimum, absolute minimum setback is 25.
Yes.
And, we're on the same, roughly the same pain, there's a little up and down in between, uh, my chickens and the court, but, I can see a six-foot person, I'm standing here, you're standing there, 29 feet away, um, I would say that, uh, in my view, that is, is very close. Second, the very first criteria for compliance with this review is protection of adjourning, adjoining premises against seriously detrimental uses by the provision of, among other things, sound and sight barriers, I'm sorry, it says sound and sight buffers. As far as I can tell from reading all the materials, the sound and sight buffers that have been provided for in this $2.6 million project is a chain link fence, it's not a sound or a sight barrier at all, and my chickens, and me on my hammock are gonna be there, the next thing is, there's no other provisions, this is a community, uh, athletic facility in a residential B neighborhood, and that's a heavy ask, and I just see very little, um, uh, accommodation, we don't wanna, we don't wanna devote money to a, 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 a sight-blocking fence or plantings such as arborvitae, I think it's unbalanced, I think we're listening entirely and, and planning for, look, I recognize this will be good for the tennis team, and for, for tennis players, but there's gotta be some balance with the neighborhood, with the people here, this proposal for eight courts, constructed as it is, is, is really an imposition on the, um, uh, the quiet enjoyment of our property as, as, as longtime neighbors, and, um, I'm very disappointed that I'm, I'm seeing these, this, this proposal list planned for the first time tonight, live, so I'm, I'm getting to analyze it, um, real time, and it's, uh, it, it doesn't, um, it doesn't feel like an appropriate, uh, approach, there was, there was no new proposal that I saw, there was no revisions to the proposal, no mention of signage, um, even time of play, it's a dawn-to-dusk facility, do you know what time dawn is? I just learned this today, dawn happens before sunrise, dawn is when the center of the sun is 6 degrees below the horizon, it happens at 4:38 on June 22nd this year, so, you know?
We're gonna talk about that.
Okay, I, 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 I just feel as though-
I, I have that on my-
I appreciate the chance to be heard, but, a chance to be really considered, and have our, uh, the, the neighbors and our butters, we are not NIMBY, we're perfectly fine with, uh, uh, redoing the courts and getting a fifth or a sixth, but this, this proposal just seems to be out of balance, um, o, overbalanced towards, uh, what the, uh, all for the interest of the tennis courts and the tennis teams, and I've heard about the need for, for eight courts, I've been in this town 50 years, it's hard to hear that we need to have eight courts at the tennis, at the high school, when I've survived 50 years in this town with four, and, and I'd like to, you know, I think we could manage, we could do it with five or six. The tennis team plays for a few months a year. I'm, I'm, I'm fine having their few matches go a little bit extra. It's the weekend use of the court, dawn to dusk by the community in an endless stream of play, really close to our property that is, that is unfair. My other neighbors are entirely too nice in, in the way that they have. We've talked about this and I know, I know how they feel. They're, they're, they're really nice folks and, and we try to be good neighbors too. I asked the planning board to seriously consider sending this back. I know there's a town meeting warrant out there. Just like I don't think it made sense to put, to put the tennis courts right along the line to accommodate a shade structure. I don't think it's appropriate to rush this thing through because someone put a town meeting warrant on without ever going through the planning board in town to justify it. I look at that thing up there and I still see ways you can move those courts farther to the parking lot. If it breaks the alignment a little bit, I think I'd rather live with that than having it 29 feet from the quiet enjoyment of my property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Ellen? And if you could stop your screen share, please, thanks a lot.
Ellen Dudley, 567 Webster Street. First of all, I'd like to ask if the current fence is 25 feet from my property.
So we'd like to bring a short screen.
Because I don't think it is. Pretty sure it isn't.
I know Ellen and she's on the northern side, so-
Page north over here?
Yeah.
So currently, the existing fence is within the 25-foot setback. The proposed plan puts the new fence exactly where the existing is.
The black line right there is the fence?
That, so this line right here-
That's the current fence?
That's your property line?
Yeah.
This is the edge of the-
And you're telling me that's 25 feet from-
It is not. It's within 25 feet. The, the existing is within 25 feet.
Right, so how, how is that okay? If the prop, if the setback's 25 feet?
I, we were managing existing conditions.
Okay, but it was done inappropriately the first time. I think we figured that out.
I wasn't part of that project.
Well, okay, so it was rushed. This has already been discussed. It was rushed through the first time. It was an add-on, somebody said. At the last minute, they realized they didn't have courts, so they threw it in there without properly measuring. As I said at the last meeting, this has been an enormous inconvenience to my family. I really don't appreciate, I'm not as nice as some of my other neighbors, but I don't appreciate the people who don't live abutting supporting this and saying that we need this because of going to two different courts. My children have played high school sports in two different places all the time. JV and varsity basketball plays in different courts. Baseball plays on different fields. Hockey plays in different places. Every sport plays in different places. I don't think that tennis is so special that it has to be in one place. Also, driving to places, every kid has to drive to places. Track has to drive to Defazio. Every sport has to drive. This is not a reason to disrupt all of these neighbors' personal space. And as John said, it has to be considered that this is not just for the high school. The community will use this court from dawn till dusk, as he said. And I have been witness to that at 5 o'clock in the morning, 6 o'clock in the morning, and 7, 8, 9 o'clock at night. So, and also the fact that there are no pickleball lines doesn't matter because people play it anyway over tennis courts. So, I mean, and I'm not gonna lie, I've played it. I'm not gonna lie. I've played it with my husband with the tennis net and we don't care where the lines are because we don't know how to play. But, you know, it's fun and we like it, so. But I don't do it at 10 o'clock at night and I don't do it, you know, I'm a-
And you won't be able to do it at the high school.
That's fine. I'm okay with that. But I, I agree with John, this has been rushed through and I don't, and you're, they already made this mistake once, 13, 14, 15 years ago. Let's not make it again. That's all.
Lee, where, where would the fence-
One of the neighbors that had a concern about the height of the fence.
Yes.
We just said to the planning board that we are considering to increase the size, the height of that fence from 12 to 14. Would you prefer 14 or would you prefer 16?
I mean, it's a double-edged sword that you're asking me.
Or you don't wanna, you don't wanna add more to the fence?
I would like the fence to be farther away from my property. It is looking at a jail. When you look at a chain link fence, it feels like you're in jail.
And that's why we were keeping the, the fence at 12 feet and we did not propose on the plan exactly that we were going to 14 or we're gonna go to 16 because we wanted to hear from you. So that's one question that I would have. If it was up to you, what would you want to see?
I appreciate that. I, I, I don't know the answer to that. Yes, the height would help me not get so many balls in my yard, but would it feel more like a prison? I don't know. I don't know. But either way, it's just-
I'm just saying that there is a problem.
I have another idea. I have one more suggestion. Since you're digging up the parking lot anyway, why not move them into the parking lot and make the parking circle around where you want the tennis court? Why not put them in the other direction? And I will say, I don't know, I don't know anything about drainage, but that is a walking puddle. I've walked that path many, many times and it's completely saturated. So I don't know if you're putting a drain in there and that's gonna alleviate it. But can you, can you make that smaller, please, and just-
More, more of the screen?
No, but I want more of, yeah, more of the plan.
What is the current distance between the existing fence and the property line? You said it was under-
Under 25 feet.
Do we have that?
I don't have the exact mention.
I'll guess five.
No, but the white line is the proper, is the 25-foot setback.
So, so we're 25 feet here, the existing fence is here, so if I was to guess, maybe we're 12 feet off the property line, but please don't hold me to that.
Right. I think it's less than that, but that, the rounded part of the parking lot to the right of the first set of courts.
Thanks, Stacy.
Yeah, why not put it there? If you're digging up that parking lot anyway, why not put it there? Get it away from the neighbors on the left side.
We are digging and we are putting drainage underneath on that lower area. We're not digging it and just leaving it as dirt. We are digging, putting asphalt back, back up. So it's gonna still be parking.
I, I know, but why can't you just move the parking? You're digging it anyway.
So you're saying eliminate parking spaces?
No, move it around the other side.
Rotate. She's saying we're, she's saying invert the relationship between that part, those parking places and put that parking closer to the neighbors on Rosemary Street.
Well, I'm not, I'm saying where you have courts, the bottom courts, maybe you could use half of that for parking. Maybe that could be another row, you know, going behind. Parking's a lot less detrimental, is all.
I understand. Do you have any other comments? Okay. Thank you very much. Does anyone else have anything they want to add? Yes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Nancy O'Leary. I'm at 46 Rosemary Street. And I just want to say thank you for, I, I got to speak last time. Thank you again for listening to us and hearing us. I completely agree with Ellen Dudley. I, I sit back here and I, I'm kind of speech listening, listening to this. I feel like I don't know how we can approve anything that, we don't know the setbacks. I feel like I don't actually know now what I'm looking at, what's gonna be approved and what's not, but it's the property lines that is just killing me. It looks like it's now, hasn't really been moved that far back from my property and the one that it sounds like you all prefer, the second option there. I likewise thought I was coming here to see, you know, six, six courts sounded like everybody kind of, that could be an option, especially with everything else we could do with the rest of the, the space. So to do all of this for these 24, these, these few teams that play only in the spring, I'm just, we really have to look at the setbacks. I don't know how we can, I don't know how we can approve this without looking at the setbacks. I also want to say when we look at the park and rec, you know, the additional waitlist people who are looking at the, like, the leagues we could still do with six courts, the people on the waitlist, they were between five and 11 people on the waitlist, that could be accommodated with six courts. A lot of the stuff, when you dig down at the numbers, it feels like we should at least look at a six-court option. I know it's easier and it would be great for the athletics, but I think we should look at the six-court option, not just push it aside, especially because we do have these property issues. And if we look at Ellen's, if we moved it all back and we had a facility of six, it seems to me like that would be a happy medium and eradicate most of these problems. The other thing I want to say is ironically, I am a pickleball player and the playtime schedule is also up. We didn't put everything that we found in the letter. But not only was Park and Rec, as we know, advertising pickleball on the courts, but we will also have to address the Playtime Schedular, which is another whole group of people that are still advertising, playing at the high school from dusk till dawn. So that hasn't been brought up and I don't know if you guys know about Playtime Schedular.
We have asked the pickleball community to not use Playtime Schedular on numerous occasions. We do not recognize it. It's still considered, it still happens, but that is not, albeit for a better word, allowed by the Park and Recreation Department. It does continue to exist. So we're aware of it. We don't condone it. We ask people not to use it. It still exists.
So it comes back to enforcement again, I guess. But I don't know how we can approve anything without, without a, a design that has the property sets, property setback.
The decision was made last night to pull the lines off of the high school courts. Pickleball community was at that meeting. They were in agreement. We just haven't had time to update all those things. It was last night around 9 o'clock.
Thank you. Does anyone else that wishes to speak? Paul, do you have any comments?
I wanted to talk about the hours of the use of the courts, when, when we're ready to discuss that.
When we're deliberating, you mean, or tonight?
No, tonight to ask the question of whether we can, you know, the neighbors are complaining that the courts are being used from dawn to dusk, which in June is from 4:30 in the morning until 9:30 at night. And they find that to be a burden. It's noisy and it's disruptive. And Paul, Paul Segentaller, one of his suggestions was
Screaming.
that, that they limit the amount of time. You know, possible, possible concessions for, for the butters. One of his suggestions was that limit the usage to start at 8 o'clock in the morning. Or maybe even later, maybe kick them off earlier, you know, 7, 7 o'clock at night. Is that something that, that could be, could be considered? Could it be practically implemented? Having a park ranger enforce it, having one park ranger who's working 40 hours is not gonna be there at 5 o'clock in the morning and 9 o'clock at night, but can you put a lock on the gate so that it's, it, the public doesn't physically have access to the courts until a certain time in the morning, 8, 8:30, whatever time we choose, and it gets locked at 6:30, 7, 7:30 at night? Is that a possibility?
I have two things. One, we're looking for volunteer park rangers, Paul, if you're interested. Two-
If I were 30 years younger, I'd say yes.
So with the changes for tennis courts and pickleball lines last night, the commission is actually reviewing all of our, all of our outdoor court policies. So there is gonna be some changes, some upgrades. We have discussed changing the times to, you know, some of the recommendations by Paul seem reasonable, certainly. The commission obviously has to make that vote. I don't get to make that vote, but I think they're in agreement that the, the idea is to look at certain times for all of our courts because I don't personally think anybody should be playing at 6 a.m. in a neighborhood. I think that's unfair to our neighbors. As far as, what was the other question you had? I've already lost.
Well, we were talking about the time and could it be enforced by actually being able to lock the gates.
So, not in, not in my time in, in Needham, but in my time, I worked in Lincoln for about 18 years. And we had clay courts, which are, I know tennis players love those things. People that own them don't. But we did-
When I was in high school, I was able to play on clay courts. They're great.
They're great to play on. They are, they are, talk about high maintenance. We did look into actually using scan cards to unlock, unlock the course, so the badges would actually scan you in. We did, I did research, again, this was a few years ago, but the proponents that have had these found more people keeping them open, putting something in the gate so that they stay open. So there's still, you still need a person or persons to maintain, police, that kind of thing.
Well, it would be, I, I wouldn't envision that it would be a park and rec employee like the ranger who would be the one who was actually, who was physically locking and unlocking the gates.
Yeah, I mean, I think all of those things are on the table for the commission and, like I said, all of our policies for all of our courts at the three different locations are being looked at between now and our, and our next meeting. So there will be some updates to those policies. So we can definitely consider those suggestions.
Anybody else, Paul?
That's what I wanted to talk about. No, I think I'm-
Justin?
We talked about-
I think we can talk when we deliberate, but it's for-
My question is, it was really the, what this current setback was, that, or what the current fence line is, and I think we've estimated 12 feet or 10 feet. One, I, I, I know that you had said tonight they were looking into doing a higher fence. I would definitely say that that is something that should definitely be considered, especially in the side of, of the, the residence up to, up to 16. You know, or, or whether that be a net at the top or whether that be a fence, it doesn't, that's not up to us. Some sort of containment, I think, is, is something that I, I think is a, is a pain point and I think that should be addressed. And I know because of budget issues and the way the town has done this with town meeting and, and the article, but I think looking into some sort of privacy screen, whether it's initially something that's cheaper in the beginning, artificial, you know, or, or synthetic, or some, some sort of privacy screen, I think is really important, especially on the sides that you are close to the, close to the neighbors. You know, and, and perhaps it's, it's a cheaper solution in the beginning and then with, with additional funding in the future from town meeting to do something a little bit, you know, better and more expensive, like I know, I, I know that's, that's costly. So those are just things that I, I think we need to be cognizant of as, you know, as, in any sort of plan. That's my comments.
I was also concerned about the hours. I think it's reasonable to impose something, especially in the morning. Can you bring back up the plan?
I prefer the perpendicular to the, to what you showed the first time, but I'm still wondering if they can still move, move over. I assume that parking counts are not to be touched and that your budget doesn't allow for any of that. That was a question that was asked about removing some of the parking.
Budget's not only for that, I'm sure about ours.
Their budget.
That's unrelated.
We can't do what you're talking about, Gus.
Oh. Natasha was just asking about parking and reconfiguring the parking and whether or not that could happen because of the bu, because of their budget. And technically speaking, as if this were any other applicant, we don't really, that budget's not our concern. Our concern is if you've got an issue with the parking, that's for them to resolve it.
But you have to be mindful that there's an allotment of budget that they have put into certain things.
Look, we, we don't do that with any other developer. Why would we do it here? If you've got an issue with the parking, we can, they get, then impose a condition accordingly.
I don't, I mean, Lee, I mean, they have a budget, right?
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I think what Hannah's trying to say is, if this was a private entity, I mean, a public entity should be treated the same as a, as a private entity. I know this is the town and we want to be partners and effective partners with the town. But I think what he's saying is that as a board, if this was, you know, a private developer and you wanted it moved and there was gonna be more cost for them, you would have it moved. The cost would not be your issue.
Hannah, can I say a further response to that? Parking count layout and vehicular site circulation were, I'm sure, this is before my time, but I'm, I'm quite sure that that was carefully considered. but I'm, I'm quite sure that that was carefully considered when the high school was originally permitted by the planning board. And I would be, in designing a project of this type, I would be highly reluctant. And I think the other, others on the team can speak to this too, but I would be incredibly reluctant to, to disturb the site circulation vehicular for purposes of putting in a tennis court where there is otherwise space available on the campus to, to do that. I, I would, I would be very worried that either losing parking spaces or adjusting the flow of traffic in and out of the high school would have unintended consequences at a minimum and would raise all sorts of other issues, certainly, would be likely.
What about the, the setback on the north side? Is that just a non-conforming?
I'll ask Chris, is that legally non-conforming?
That's a pre-existing non-conforming condition. We're not going any closer to that property line than the, the existing tennis courts currently exist.
So just in general, I would like to see how the upper tennis court from... How that could actually...
Sorry, sorry.
This is an important question.
Okay, but she's in the middle of talking, have some respect for your colleague, please.
Go ahead, about the non-conforming?
Yeah. I mean, I'm asking, I'm asking the question.
Is it legally pre-existing non-conforming?
It's...
When was it put there, when was the regulation put in place? Is it legal, if it's pre-existing?
Well, it was put there in 2007, I guess. My daughter graduated in 2009, so the project was completed, the high school project was completed in 2007 or 2008. So it's been like 15 years.
It's been a permitted condition for at least 15 years.
It's been a permitted condition. Did the board know that the tennis court was over the setback line?
I don't know without doing the research.
I mean, to say it's pre-existing is to say that the setback line changed, that it was legal at the time it was built. And I know, I believe that there, there is a bylaw that if you have a condition that has existed for a certain period of time, a non-conforming condition that was, that was legally impermissible at the time it was built, but it has stayed for a certain period of time.
Seven years.
Seven years, okay. It's been seven years, okay. Thank you.
So I, yeah, so I, I mean, I think I would like to see the, the tennis courts, maybe you can point. To see if there's a way of moving this in, even if it doesn't make this, you know, completely radical. Just to, because there's a lot of space here. Like, I'm not sure if you can do it because of the grading, but if there's a chance of looking into it, that would be, I think, an opportunity to move them away. I agree with the higher fences, if that's something, but I also agree with some type of buffer. And it could be temporary until a permanent comes in, but some, I mean, I think having a 14-foot fence in an area that currently doesn't have one next to a residential area is, is not desirable, really. But having plantings or some type of buffer would, I think, would be helpful. Even if it's an alternate, and that could happen at another time, but at least something temporary until that does happen.
Anything else? I'm surprised that we, that we haven't been able to have as part of this revised site plan, a properly measured site plan, the same way that we would expect of any other developer. That's a bit of a disappointment for me. I think what we're hearing is there is consensus from abutters to, and there's consensus among the board to impose certain restrictions that's, that we think are reasonable, that it sounds like you, as the applicant, think are also reasonable, which include some sort of screening. Whether it's temporary or permanent is none of our concern. Our issue is that there is, as you're installing this, because this thing is going to be installed at six months, a year before it's really going to be completed, something like that. So there's ample time, and there is ample time to go back to town meeting if, you know, if that's necessary. And I think that, I think the hours and being able to control that in a prescribed way, I think we're going to have a condition on that, and I'm not hearing from the town any opposition to that either. And then fencing is part of that screening issue that would help alleviate some of the concern that some of the neighbors have had. Like my colleague Justin had said, whether that's an additional netting thing or it's a different fence, it's, you know, it's probably up to you guys, we'll just say. And I think that that should probably continue. I, I still see, I understand, looking at it from a site circulation point of view, I actually think that if we rotated and had parking on where the courts are now and put the courts where some of the parking is, in particular that rounded area, that's actually a worse scenario, because you're going to have cars, you know, that are going to be, A, driving, and B, idling, and emitting other emissions right, you know, within 25 feet of some, of the gentleman and the lady's hammock. So I would never, ever think that that's a reasonable solution myself, yet I do think that there is room to fix up this. Can you go back to the other slide, the previous one? There still seems to me that you can accommodate, in a reasonable way, without significant impact, to be able to get more of those, to even the, the top set of angular courts closer to, to the parking structure.
You can't do it with this plan, because you, it's, you're super tight up there, and you're super tight at the bottom.
But there's less...
I don't know, I mean, do you think that, I don't think you can bring it in any closer, very little.
What I'm hesitant with on this option and the, and the next option is getting this too close.
Right.
I think that's going to become...
But if you, but the grading changes as you move a little east, doesn't it? So doesn't that make it a little easier to move over that side? You're getting away from that pinch point.
If you're moving the courts this way, perpendicular, that space continues to get smaller and smaller here. So, if you mind if I...
Sure.
So if you think about, from the previous option we showed our last hearing, we've taken the courts completely moving this way. This corner continues to move, the more we move closer here, this is the small space. So we're, we're talking, we're giving 60th space for 12-foot, 14-foot high fencing. It feels, you're in like a valley between buildings. That, that's where I'm concerned, especially because we have a 3-foot grade change in there here.
And then the other plan, where it's more perpendicular...
It's a worse condition, but again, we're looking at this from an orientation standpoint, and this gets, this gives you more green space away from the neighbors. So, you know, where the previous option, your courts are here, we're gaining more green space here. We are gaining more green space here by rotating it.
I see.
This is a worse condition than the previous option. Another hesitation I have, technically, we can probably keep pushing these. I think one of the things we need to recognize is if we don't give enough adequate space over here for spectators, we're going to have spectators getting to the backside. I think that's something we talked about with our, with the meeting with neighbors. So by giving us some space between the parking lot and the tennis courts, we're keeping people out of that back-of-house area, which is right next to the neighbor's property.
Is there a regulation between how much distance you need from the very end of, of the court and, let's say, that walkway? You see what I mean? Is there, is there a requirement, a regulation of the tennis authority?
Between, yes, 21 feet. 21 feet from the baseline of the court, from the first instruction.
So what was that, 11 feet or 21?
21.
21 feet.
Yep.
And what's the distance, what's the distance now?
So, so this green space, we have 21 feet from the court to the fence line, so that, that's consistent in all of the options.
Okay. So Paul, when you were talking about that in your, in the submission, the 21 feet, that's what you're referring to, that back distance in the court? I think Natasha's solution, it, you know, makes more sense. If you can break out that top, if you can, you can move over that other one. It's less universally accessible, but I, I think you can still get a little more room over, at least. It sounds, and it sounds like, to be completely honest, it sounds like there's room, by your own admission, a second ago, but it hasn't been measured. And that's why I'm saying that's a bit of a disappointment in, like, we would expect, as we would with any other developer, to have all of these distances measured off.
Have plants.
Yeah.
Have plants.
Yes, exactly. So I, we have two options. We can either close the hearing...
I think we've asked for a lot of new additional information, but we're not ready to close the hearing.
So then, let's get the additional information. Are you clear on what we need?
I, I have a list, I want to go through it and...
What's on your list?
Make sure it's comprehensive. Proposed hours of operation.
A screening plan. A site plan with measured setbacks and elevation.
With the courts a lot, all facing the same direction.
Like this, you mean this option?
Consistent with option two?
Consistent with option two, is that...
Oh, with three or two.
I think we should have it for, I think we should have it for option... I think we should have it for probably all three options, so then we can figure out which, with the original plan, the sec...
We know the setback for option one that we presented tonight, it was 43 feet from the lead, as opposed to 25 in the, 29 in the plan presented three weeks ago. So it's 43 consistently across the bottom of all four new courts under option one. And it was 29 to the closest pinch point under option two, increasing from there as you move to the northeast.
What's the dimension of the, at the thicker part of that?
Well, Natasha, I, what I got was that you're kind of convinced that option two is really the way to go.
I think it's better, because all the tennis courts are facing the same direction.
I don't think we need to have them go through the exercise of putting, putting together plans for option one. If option two is the way to go, which is what they want to do anyway, and yours, and you're in agreement with them that option two is better than option one, then let's just have plans for option two, so that we can see what we're dealing with. I mean, you know, when, when we get something from a private developer, they've decided what they want, and they give us plans for what they want.
Right.
So this is the one, is it, so I'm, now I'm just confused.
Yes, this is option two.
This is two, well, what, there was a third?
Yeah.
No, there was option from three weeks ago. Then option one tonight, and option two tonight. This is the one that you were saying, yes, okay, Gus, good. So yeah, plans for, for this would be appropriate.
And then, so I'll say, I'll say this, for those at home, and please stop sharing, please, and see if there's anyone else on screen. It doesn't look like anyone else wants to speak. So for those that are in the room and those are watching, the hearing will be, will be continued to another meeting. We should talk about the schedule in a second, but in the interim, there'll be another opportunity, A, for you to participate, and you can also provide additional written comment, it's just as effective. You're welcome to do both, of course. And the email is planning@needmma.gov for those at home. Unless there's anyone else wishing to speak, then I'd like to move towards a schedule. I don't know what's...
It will be on May the 14th. We have one hearing already scheduled for that night, and that's with the hospital. That's for their proposed trailer behind the hospital, that's set for 7:00. So probably 7:30, 7:45, I think.
I think 7:45, because I don't know whether we're going to have neighbors showing up.
7:45?
Yeah.
So I move that we continue this hearing until May 14th at 7:45.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Justin, any discussion, carrying now, I'll come to the vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries, we're continued. Thank you all very much for your participation tonight.
Chris?
Yes.
We got something in from the Attorney General, Attorney General's office, on the...
On the ADU, the definition of...
Have you seen that?
I just, yes, he's, he has seen it, he's involved in it, Teddy's posted the article. I, we just, we included it in the package, the board tonight, that's probably why he's asking you this question.
Can you hang for a minute, so that we can talk about that?
That comes up under correspondence, we want to take it.
Yeah, but if Chris needs to, if Chris needs to leave, maybe we can handle it.
Yeah, no, I understand, I wanted to talk about our next agenda item anyways, so have a seat. We, we planned around, we did some few other things instead. Wait. Oh, yes, we did do that, I'm sorry, we did do that. Yeah, we did, we did take care of that, that's right.
We decided to reject it.
Yes, exactly.
So we can't refer, or we, all remember we did not refer?
From the town meeting.
Let town meeting, let town meeting member refer.
Yeah, if a town meeting member makes a motion to refer, which I expect John Bullion to do, then we'll deal with that. But I was suggesting that it's not the planning board, of course, to make a motion to refer.
Certainly is a...
For various reasons that you weren't here for the discussion. Oh, oh, dude, we're here.
I heard it, yeah, I agree, the board wouldn't make that motion.
So, go ahead, Paul, this, I...
Right, so we got, we got the letter from the Attorney General's office saying that we have a definition of family in the ADUs, which is an illegal definition of family.
Yes.
But we seem to have a definition of family already in existence that the Attorney General approved the first time around, because it's in our bylaw.
Yep.
And actually, we expanded on that definition.
Right.
We didn't restrict it, we expanded it. And so the Attorney General's letter says, "Talk to town council about this."
So, and, right, so what the Attorney General, the Attorney General's jurisdiction, well, backing up. Attorney General reviews all bylaw changes in this town and every other town, both general bylaw changes and zoning bylaw changes, for consistency with state law. So when we changed the ADU bylaw, the bylaw was submitted to the Attorney General, and they reviewed it. When they do that review, their jurisdiction is limited to the bylaw changes that are adopted by town meeting. Their jurisdiction does not include the existing portions of the bylaw. So it was only the three words included in the changes to the definition of family that the Attorney General had jurisdiction to, to strike in. Those three words were indeed stricken by the AG. So the bylaw, ADU bylaw will otherwise go into full effect. The definition of family will remain, you know, effective and valid in the bylaw, but for the three words that were stricken. And we probably should put on the list of things to start working on for an upcoming town meeting, otherwise cleaning up the definition of family that exists in the zoning bylaw.
So let's add that for October town meeting, and the amendment would be to strike those three words.
No, 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 those are... We don't, the Attorney General takes care of that for us.
We're talking about the fact that Attorney General has said, "Oops, we made a mistake on the first go-round, we shouldn't have approved the definition of family that you gave us back when you adopted the original ADU. We can't change that, we don't have jurisdiction to change that now, but talk to town council, because your definition of family does not, does not comply with state law."
Right.
I'm not exactly clear on what state law says, but, from, from the letter, but, you know, I just, I just saw it today for the first time, so I haven't had a chance to, to really analyze it, but, you know...
So the, the definition remains in effect.
Yeah.
But for the three words that were disapproved, and as I said, we can work on...
Unless somebody wanted to sue the town to say that our... Unless somebody wanted to sue the town to say that our bylaw doesn't comply with state law.
I don't know that that component, the remaining aspects of that definition are applied in any regular way in the administration of the zoning bylaw. So I don't know that it's likely to cause any immediate enforcement problems, but certainly we want the definition to be consistent with state law, and we can arrange for that to happen.
So, so for October, let's add it to the planning calendar, to work with you to resolve what broader reform we need.
I can, if, if you want to task me with it now, I can, I can share with me and Alex, you know, over the course of the next couple of weeks, a proposed redefinition of family.
That, that'd be great, I mean, we've got this town meeting to deal with, we're not going to get to it this town meeting.
But to be prepared to have it.
Not for this town meeting, but for October.
To have it for October.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
Not a, not a, not a colossal amount of work, we can certainly put that together pretty quick.
Great. Okay, and does anybody else have anything for our town council? Okay.
Good to see you.
Good to see you.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you very kindly. So then, summer schedule we'll deal with when already is present. This brings us to the minutes. Now, our minutes of January sixteen. There were some red lines, and I think there were some yellow lines for clarity, too. And Justin, you can't vote on these.
Yes, I would not be able to.
But I gotta pull up the packet.
But you're taking Jean's seat, you have to explain all this.
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go on. Welcome to the next few hours, no.
So the minutes of January sixteen. There is a question on, on page two, review of the solar zoning, second paragraph. Ms. Espada stated she and Ms. Cle looked at other towns and she does not remember any consistency or inconsistency. It should be inconsistency. Okay? And then, I, Mr. Rucker, Mr. Alpert, and then, if the board in town want to allow particular sizes and locations of the solar facilities, it should be called out in the bylaw. That's actually what we said, that's fine, that should stay. And then, the next one is in the paragraph, now on page three. Mr. Heap stated, if it is allowed for municipal, it would or might.
What about may, it may need to be allowed for all. Unless he stated it, maybe we should have grabbed him.
Right. The, do you have?
Because the heap stated if it's allowed for municipal, it may need to be allowed for all.
For all municipal uses, I think.
Right, so.
Maybe that's what we need to add, it would need to be allowed for all municipal uses.
And keep would, okay. Alex, you clear?
Yeah.
And then, on page four. Mr. Albert clarified, small-scale setback is five feet, and between five feet and the distance of the primary building setback, there needs to be screening. He noted industrial business do not, does not need, does not have five feet required for accessory use, so it is the setback for the district.
Right, that doesn't sound right. I noted that industrial business does not have a five, does not have five feet requi, um, does not have a five-foot setback.
For access.
For accessory use.
Right.
So the property line is the setback for the district.
That's correct.
That's the way it should read.
So Alex, you have that?
No.
He noted industrial business does not have a five-feet, five-foot setback requirement for accessory use. So the property line is the setback for the district.
Got it, thank you.
Excellent, so that is our minutes for January sixteen. Do my colleagues have any other comments on these set of minutes?
I move we approve the minutes of January sixteenth with the red line changes and the changes we made this evening.
Excellent, we have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha.
Sure, second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all, all in favor, please signify by saying aye, accept. Accept, Justin. Aye, so the motion carries by the three members present for that meeting. Next up are the minutes of February six. And we're talking about Hone and update, this is on page one. The first article is the base compliance map, she feels it would be a short time to pass compliance.
I think what she is trying to say, she, she feels it would just be minimally compliant, it would meet this, it would meet the requirements of the law, but would not really go far to produce.
I'm seeing it as a.
It would be a short time to pass compliance.
I think it would be.
Like, less of an argument?
Less of an, yeah, it would be.
Easier to pass.
Easier to pass compliance.
Who's she, is that you or Heidi?
Heidi Fraell.
That's what I thought. Okay, so Alex, do you know what we're changing?
I'm wondering if the sentence is needed, to be honest, but if I.
I think you should take it out because since the first article is based compliance, the second article would be an add-on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's more of a personal thought than an actual statement.
I'd like the planning board to read on the Hersey area, yes.
Yeah, that's correct.
That's fine. But re, written feedback, yes, that should be, that should stay written feedback. Next is the state, plan A received, state approval, yeah, that's right. That's page two, page three. Mr. Albert wants to have the finance committee on board, changes cannot be made after five-one, when it is sent to the Commonwealth, and it is not clear whether amendments.
Can be made.
Can be made.
It can, they can't be made because, right, because.
We just need to get the question correct. I think that's right, as, it is not clear whether amendments can, I suppose, it doesn't matter if it's can or cannot, because it means the same thing, once you have weathered qualifying.
I think it probably depends on the amendment you're making.
Well, that's for the substance of the amendment, but to the, to the verbiage in our minutes. I think it would just read, it is not clear whether amendments can be made.
Right. Can be made, correct, I agree.
And then, on to page four, so this was the application, it was knee-high was the applicant. And. I think it is knee-high, but we can strike that, and what's the name, what's the property address? We could say regarding the public hearing for.
This is a medical office?
Yes.
Highland, whatever, we, we can add the address, Alex, whatever it is on Highland.
So that's page four, that's it. Can I have a mo, anyone else have any comments? Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of February six, as in our packet and further revised here tonight?
So moved.
We have a motion by Paul, a second by Natasha. We note that Justin abstains, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries, this brings us to the minutes of February twenty-seven. And on these minutes.
The February twenty-seventh.
Yes, on February twenty-seven, I don't think there's a yellow line.
No, no changes.
Can I have a motion to approve the minutes as contained, for February twenty-seven as contained in our packets?
So moved.
A motion by Natasha, second by Paul. Justin abstains, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. This brings us to a report from Lee, or anyone else? Lee, do you have anything to report?
Sure, Hone is meeting tomorrow night, it is the final meeting of the Hone committee after a long period of work. The draft report is out. The draft zoning is done, and then it went into the packet today at five o'clock, so I'm feeling pretty comfortable that it's ninety-nine percent there, can't believe we're finally there. So basically, it's a draft zoning for, zoning that actually implements the base plan, and then all the map changes, all the legal descriptions that are associated with that, and then all the zoning framework that actually implements the add-on plan, and then all the map changes associated with that, and the final report is there.
Now that we have that, can you send that to all board members, please?
Sure, we'll just give you, I'll give you the link to the, or Alex, to the packet, because the packet has the final report, all the materials, and the draft zoning. So the committee hopefully will close out its work tomorrow night, we'll see.
So is the last thing, a list of recommendations at home?
That's, that's in the report.
That's in the report, okay, great.
I mean, I haven't seen it because it came out at five-thirty, so, but.
I know, we have been working and working and working. The drafts have been going back and forth the last three days, but it's out, and.
Excellent work.
Then as a reminder, the Hone, we're meeting with the select board on the thirtieth for a presentation of the, of the plan and the, and the recommended zoning, that the finance committee, select board. This is on the thirtieth, I don't know if there's a time yet or not.
When you say wait, you mean the Hone committee or you mean the planning board?
The planning board, there's a joint meeting with the planning board, select board, and finance committee, and Hone on April the thirtieth.
So I'm supposed to be there?
You are supposed to be there.
I have it on my calendar.
Okay.
I have it at six o'clock, does that sound?
That's correct.
That's correct, okay.
And we'll need a power as well.
And then the plan is hopefully to send everything off to the state immediately after that meeting, so that the ninety-day clock starts, and so we have their review of the zoning to make sure it's compliant, so we know where we are for the fall.
Great.
Okay.
And the warrant meetings on Monday.
Yes, and we have a warrant meeting on Monday, and I think you all have your assignments. And I'll cover the conference, I think there's a conference room, I'm going to cover that.
That's on the twenty-ninth.
Yep.
The warrant meetings.
Right.
Monday, the twenty-ninth.
And then town meeting, I think starts on May the sixth, and as, as our normal practice, Justin, you don't know this, we normally meet before town meeting, just to, we post an agenda, just in case anything.
Six-thirty, seven o'clock?
Seven.
Seven? A half hour before, so in case anything comes out that we have to vote, we're.
We'll do our summer schedule.
We open the meeting, and we don't close, we don't adjourn, so that we're still open during town meeting.
Got it.
And then, anything else?
I have a question about town meeting.
Yeah.
Have we voted our recommendations for our two zoning articles that we recommend that they be approved?
We did.
Yes, and you signed them. You signed it, and it's, and it's, and they're done, and they're sitting in Teddy's office.
Now Louise's office.
There's another.
Yes, I gotta get used to the new name.
There's a citizens petition for money for a.
Planning.
For a planning person to review the MBTA, the Hone recommendations. Do we want to make a recommendation on that article?
Why don't we wait, Hone has invited him in to the Hone meeting tomorrow night to, to maybe identify if there's anything that hasn't been studied so far, I mean, one thing that hasn't been done is a traffic study, and we act, and that's, and we've actually, actually had a meeting with GPI and Katie this morning to scope out, using GPI to do a traffic study, that looks at the impacts of the base plan and the neighborhood plan based upon the propensity to change model, looking at how it would impact key intersections along the corridor, which is the one piece we don't have. So I don't know if he'll agree that that's the piece that's missing, and then acknowledge that we're doing that, and be satisfied, and withdraw the article. Let's maybe wait.
Okay.
Until the Hone committee discusses it, the select board decides what they're going to do.
You say you invited him, has he accepted the invitation?
Yeah, he's coming, he's coming, he's on the agenda for Hone tomorrow.
Good.
But that reminds me, do they need to sign anything on the Matthews citizens petition?
Yes.
So that would be today.
What do we need to sign?
Because we don't meet again.
Yeah, that's right.
No, we're going to meet a half hour before the meeting.
No, yeah, we.
We need it beforehand, though.
Yeah, but I'm, that article probably won't come up the first night, but I'd like to have everything done and filed before the meeting starts.
So what are we signing, our recommendation?
I have to go print something.
It's only nine-thirty, we've got two hours.
I know, right? Anybody remember who made the motion and who seconded it? You seconded it.
I seconded it, and.
You made the motion?
I think Paul.
I made the motion.
I think so. All right, I, I'll write it and.
Oh, yes, I remember now, I gave my speech and Adam said, "Was that a motion?" And I said, "Yes."
I hope you guys have something else to talk about.
Well, I, I, I'm going to read it in the minutes, I, read in.
Correspondence.
Correspondence into the record. We've received the following items of correspondence, unless, Lee, you have anything else to report on?
No, that was all.
Okay. Correspondence from the Massachusetts Attorney General's Office of Municipal Law requiring a modification to the definition of family in our by, in our bylaw, which we previously discussed with town council this evening. We have an email dated April first from Lou Wolfson of Twenty-Nine Camino Road commenting on Hone's recommendation for the property owned by Brookline Oriental as it straddles two zones. Did you see that?
No, I didn't see that one.
So. So it's on.
It's the last page of this.
It's on, it's on Hillside.
Yes, 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 I did.
So the reason why I'm calling it out is that there are access concerns, and I don't know, Lee, if Hone had resolved it.
This is Louis Wolfson's.
Yeah.
Yeah, I saw it because it was about reviewing the proposed Hone map in that area of Crescent Street, which is the only. No, we haven't talked about it, we have a meeting tomorrow.
So, Lee, can you add that? Are you reading it, or are you?
Yeah, I just, I just.
Yeah, I did read it, and, and.
It just seems like, especially given that Hone's dealing with it tomorrow, that's.
It was about the traffic over the Crescent Street, it's changing that industrial to the residential.
And once you cha, and once Hone changes it, town meeting changes it, it's going to create.
Well, town meeting, I mean, the article, I mean, the district now, Natasha, is basically that industrial district on Crescent, and the front half of those lots is owned industrial, but those, the back portion of those lots, which goes, I think, back, basically down into a wetlands area.
Right.
Is included in the district boundary, because we had to, we had to follow the district boundaries under the MBTA Communities Act. They don't just, they, if you have a split lot, you've got to follow the boundary of the lot. So the, the district grabs the residential, the back half, for purposes of calculating the density.
It's the same as the average square, where you have like two districts going through, right?
And every square, or, in every square you have, you have basically, yeah, you have two districts on that lot, you've got the overlay and the residential district next to it, which is where we're not allowing any residential, or any, any of the apartment, the building to protrude.
So should Hone consider that tomorrow night?
I'm not su, what is he saying exactly, that the residential piece should not be included? I'm having a hard time understanding what his point is.
Well, maybe it makes sense to speak to him tomorrow, before Hone meets.
Okay.
To get clarity on that. Because I, he knows that area well.
Without this inclusion, it pigeonholes all traffic down either.
And I think his point is, if the lots are converted to residential, it.
Nothing's being converted to residential, the overlay is being put on top of.
The industrial.
The two districts, basically, that's why I don't understand.
What was, what was your vote, what was your motion?
My motion was.
To reject the town meeting, we recommend the town meeting.
That the planning board recommends the town meeting reject.
Article forty-four.
Article forty-four.
The citizens petition on dimensional regulations. Thanks, Alex.
I'll, I'll call him.
Okay, thank you. I'm always curious, when Alex goes in the back door, how far she can get before the light turns on, because she's a very fast walker, like, I was impressed. We also have in our packet from April two, an email from Louis Wolfson, again, of Twenty-Nine Camino Road as a follow-up on the hearing on the citizens petition. Twenty-Nine Camino Road, as a follow-up on the hearing on the citizens petition relating to the dimensional regulations and floor area ratio, noting that, uh, the floor area ratio does not add to the massing of the house. We have an email dated April two from George Lynch of One Hundred Mayflower, uh, inquiring about zoning regulations for large homes on small lots, and email dated April ten from Matt Hughes of Thirty-Four Pond Street, commenting on the, uh, the citizens petition for, uh, floor area ratio, uh, requesting that it needs to be studied further. By email dated April four from Mark B's of Two-Sixty Washington Avenue, we have a citizens petition for area ratio advocating for regulatory reform. We have an email dated April two from Dana Alexander of Sixty-Five Mayflower Road regarding the citizens petition for area ratio, advocating for regulatory reform, and the same is true by emails dated April two, one from Jennifer Adler of Eighty-Flo- Eighty-Five Mayflower Road, and another from Catherine Adams of Eighty-Four Wedding Way. Um, uh, both, again, dealing with the citizens petition on floor area ratio. Um, so with that.
May I make some comments?
On.
On, uh, on some of the correspond, on a couple pieces of correspondence.
Yes.
Um, my first comment is, I greatly appreciated the email from Matt Hughes. I thought he did an excellent job.
Yeah.
Of presenting, um, uh, the issues. And, uh, my second comment is, we get a lot of emails.
So it's not.
About, um, the, the tear downs, the, the whole housing situation, where people complain about trees being taken down.
Yes.
Now, you've all heard this, except Justin, he's new. When I joined this board, nine years ago, we talked about, this board, talked about having a tree bylaw, and doing something to have a tree bylaw, and we were slapped, there's a word before slapped, um, by the select board.
It's not a jurisdiction.
Who said, it's not your jurisdiction.
Right.
It's our jurisdiction. And here we are, nine years later, nothing's been done. I mean, they had a tree, a tree bylaw committee, and then the select board decided they did not want to have a tree bylaw, so it got squashed. And we're getting complaints about lots being denuded. And I would like to tell people, when they complain to us about we need a tree bylaw, to let them know, we have been in favor of a tree bylaw, but it's the jurisdiction of the select board. Please complain to the select board, not to us.
Want somebody posted on their website?
However, we can do it, because, you know, I'm tired of seeing these emails complaining to us that we need a tree bylaw, when they're complaining to the wrong people, and we should direct them.
Yeah.
To send your email to the select board.
The CAPC, which we were part of, as part of the planning board, was also, had recommendations for that, and, um, similar to solar and similar, and I think Artie might have been the chair of that group. I was, I was on the zoning, and, um, and we talked about the solar also. So anyway, I think it's something that the CAPC, and that's a committee that was put together by the select board.
Right. But, again, it, that is the jurisdiction of the select board, and we can write a letter, I'm happy to write a letter as chair of the select board, to the chair of the select board, saying that we will continue to get.
The chair of the planning board, to the chair of the select board.
Select board.
You said you were the chair of the select board, to the chair of the select board.
He wishes he were the chair of the select board.
My ambition's getting.
Are you moving from board to board?
My ambition's getting ahead of me at this late hour. I, 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 let's, so let's all chat with you about drafting a letter, with the permission of, of the board, and we'll send it to, uh, we'll send it to the chair of the select board, uh, you know, requesting action. I do, on the issue of the citizens petition, one of the reasons why I agreed to reject it is because the, there are several reasons, but one of which is that, uh, we're gonna need, to solve the question of the large house, as we've all talked about, it needs to be an integrated solution.
Yeah.
We have to deal with stormwater management, a tree bylaw relates to that, that's already being looked at by the town, uh, and there are other things that we need to look at as well, that have, and all of those pieces have to work together to properly solve the question. Do you have an additional?
No, I was gonna say, the stormwater's already being vetted.
It's being done, right.
But I don't know.
And I don't know if, if that has anything to do with the size of a house necessarily, it's the lot coverage and the setbacks.
But I don't.
So, I mean, I, I, I think that, as part of this process, that, you know, the planning board is gonna reevaluate, this has to be holistic. You can't have just, you know, they're now doing another stormwater plan. It's the foot, it's the concrete, non-impervious footprint, these massive houses that are changing hydrology of Needham, and this has to be looked at. But, so that's where I'm concerned, you're gonna have, you know, stormwater bylaw changing, you know, by, by the select board. We need to look at this holistically, and that's the thing.
I wanna make sure that the work that this other committee is doing on, like, early on in its policymaking work, that it, on its agenda is an engineering study of the issue of hydrology for single, for single-family districts on the one hand, but also taking into account some of the other commercial work and future development, too. And, uh, things like, you know, the, uh, Needham Housing Authorities Project on Linden and Chambers.
But aren't there requirements for those commercial projects for stormwater management?
Yes, they're all subject to the storm, to our current.
But I, my.
Yeah, it's the residential, I think, that is missing right now.
That's right.
But I, I actually disagree with that. I think the stormwater management, but I think the, the stormwater regulations were designed at a time when we had a different climate reality.
No, but they're changing all that. I mean, there's a committee now that's looking at all that. I, I think we wanna make sure that what they're doing is compatible with what we're doing, and agrees with what we're doing, but we don't wanna, we don't want to redo their work.
Right.
I think we just need to be aware, as we look at maybe the dimensional changes we wanna make.
Right.
To understand how that interacts with the current stormwater bylaw, and what those rules are, and whether they, they need to be updated at all.
And, and I think actually, even easier than that, I think the stor-, if the stormwater regulations are revised based on the current conditions of what's allowed, because any changes we recommend will be to reduce that impact anyways, because the side, because the building, the structure would be smaller. So therefore, there'd be less impervious space. So if they base their calculations on the worst of the largest houses in our smaller lot district, then that should satisfy that problem, right?
Well, but stormwater can also be retained on site. I mean, there are different ways of dealing with it, right? If you have such a large house, it's almost a commercial building, you have to deal with it differently than you have a, a smaller house.
Yeah.
But, and I think the, the, I mean, and hopefully, they're, they're evaluating, like, dry wells don't work anymore.
Don't tell me the score, Paul, please.
You know, like, that's the thing, put a dry well in. But.
Right.
My, my dry well, my dry well is, is underwater.
Yes.
You know, nine months of the year.
Right.
So a thousand gallon dry well, doesn't, doesn't hold.
As you've been talking basketball, not, not.
Both, and hockey.
No.
And hockey?
But I agree with you, but I think there's a group that's working, and I think, like, just making sure that it's aligned with some of this other work, but that we don't, but, but they're, they're already in process, so how, how do we, um, make sure that, right, that, that there is some discussion?
I'll call, who should I, who's the chair of that committee?
Kevin Keane.
Kevin? Okay, so I'll call Kevin.
I don't know if he's the chair, but he's the representative from the select board.
Who's the chair of the committee? Can we find out? Can someone call Karis and find out? Let me know, and I'll call this week?
I would call Kevin, because he's part of.
I'll call him, too.
Yeah.
No problem. Um, uh, does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
No, I just wanna tell you, I did look at Boo's memo, and I know why we didn't do what he asked us to do. So he wanted us to rezone in the, um, the Brookline Oriental as part of this district, but the Hone Committee decided not to rezone any residential lots. If, we, we were rezoning commercial land, and we grabbed residential land, if it was a split lot situation where the, where the, there was commercial and residential, Brookline Oriental is pre-existing non-conforming, sitting on a general residence lot. So the committee decided they weren't rezoning any residential land. So that, that, that decision, I mean, what he's asking for was discussed, so there's no need to bring it up again. I'll let him know that.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion by Justin, his first, a second by Natasha.
His inauguration.
And, uh, any discussion, hearing none, I'll come to vote, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, we've, uh, resolved to adjourn, we're adjourned. Thank you all very much.